Sad note, we lost a 20-month-old child yesterday in the Guadalupe River. Tragedy, and so think about that family today as in your thoughts.
I think I'm gonna have plenty of opportunity to comment as the meeting wears on, so I'll go ahead and start the meeting. We're first, what we do on every meeting, whether it's a regular Commissioners' Court meeting or a special Commissioners' Court meeting, we start with the most important things going on in our community. 1.1 is to consider, discuss, and take appropriate action regarding the update, facility use, and other matters related to COVID-19. And this is Doug Thomas, who is our Emergency Management Coordinator.
Good morning, Judge, good morning, Commissioners. All right, week 17. As you all know, you have the report in front of you, majority of it is stuff that's happened in the past. However, if you all do know that on Friday Governor Abbott issued an executive order, Executive Order Number 28, moving a lot of things back, closing down bars and some other establishments and things like that. So our COVID current situation is we had no deaths from COVID-19 this past week. Our Kerr County cases to date, we had that 84 total cases for COVID-19, picked up 11 over the weekend. Peterson Regional did, tested 120 people, I think, over the weekend, so we're looking at getting some more test results back sometime this week. We have about 60 that are active, and Peterson Regional Medical Center currently has two patients in there, so again, DSHS is changing the way that they report their numbers, and so if you'll skip back to our Kerr County testing, Peterson Regional to date has tested 1,979 people, tested military forces, done 386, nursing homes, 675, total of 84 COVID positives. Our current infection rate is 2.7%. Part of what Governor Abbott has said in the past, when we went to, originally, we went to the 50% ahead of the rest of the state because we were above that threshold of six total cases. There's also been a caveat to that. There's a process where we could be moved back to 25, 50%. We are, start currently at 75%. Let me see if I can find it. Basically, you have to have greater than a 12% infection rate for, let's see, where did I put that? Well, you have to have greater than 12%.
And we're at 2.7?
And we're at 2.7. The thing that they did not say is what their testing time period is. So, and I've called DSHS and asked them that, and they're like, they responded, you know, nobody's asked that question. So was it 12% from the time we started doing testing, or is it another block of maybe four weeks or whatever? So I'm waiting to get that information.
And this is 2.7?
And we're at 2.7. People tested, yes.
Yeah.
Not the county, 2.7 of those individuals tested, yes.
On those that are positive, do you have the statistics on what the age distribution is in that?
No, right now, I can get that for you.
Would you? Because several people have asked me that, what is, you know, where is the, and I heard this morning on the national news, like, the median age in those positive is 35. It'd be very interesting to know in Kerr County what that, not just the mean, but how the distribution is based on age.
I'll see if Kerr, I'll see if they've got a breakdown for Kerr County. I'm not sure they do, I'm pretty sure they, I know they have one for DSHS Region 8, but not particularly, maybe not this county in particular. But I can check.
Thank you.
In the, they've changed the methodology on one of the forms that we get from the state, and to a probable category, add a probable category, and a probable category is included as a positive until it's done otherwise. And the 84 that we have, are probables included in that, or is that only an actual?
No, we have probables included in that, but it's very minimal, it's like 82.
The majority of those that we have are pretty much up on the testing, the probable category.
Yes, sir. So anyway, the other, the other two ways that we can go back to 50% is if we reach so many per thousand population, and I think that number was gonna be, I don't think it's three persons per every thousand population, which would put us at about 150, so we're just right over that halfway point. And the other way was, and these are either, these are ors, so it's not, we have to have all three, but the last one is that if our surge capacity for Peterson Regional Hospital is less than 15% over there. And right now, we stand at 24% when I checked on that on Friday. Then again, they talk about the Peterson Regional catchment area, but at the same time, DSHS does not have a definition for what that catchment area is. So I'm still waiting on that clarification from DSHS. That's pretty much it. If we can go back to our Region 8 numbers, well, COVID-19 continues to spread in Texas. There's 143,371 cases, total deaths of 2,366, total recovered 78,248. Testing still continues, they've done 1.9 million tests, 1.7 million of the viral and 180,000 are the antibody tests. Surrounding counties, Kendall County is at 62, and for the longest time, Kendall County was probably number one, other than Medina County in this particular DSHS region. And it's sad to say that we finally passed them over. Medina has 90, I'm sorry, we haven't, we nearly cut it to Medina, they're at 90 with two fatalities. Kerr did not change that, should be 84, set at 45 with one fatality. Gillespie is 35, Vander is jumped to 16, both Kendall and Real County have one. Total Texas counties, 244 out of the 254 counties in Texas have a COVID-positive cases. The Region 8 numbers, active total for the time period is 7,135, recovered is 4,789, had 143 deaths, and there are 615 cases pending. That's one of those new categories that DSHS has put in, so pending investigations are still active.
We have more tests happening, which we knew was gonna be more positive cases. And that was a given. It hasn't been stressed much, but if you give more tests, you're gonna have more positives.
More we test, more positives, we're fine, yes, sir.
And recovery rates are like 99% or somewhere in that category, maybe above 99%.
I read one that said 98, so I don't know.
Well, that was incorrect. So you have 20.
Thank you, Dr. Blue.
As of yet, no, I'm talking about numbers. This is, the doctor doesn't, you might have to be a doctor to look at numbers. The numbers are about 23 or so until noon deaths in the state. 75, 76,000 people that have recovered, that we know of, and that doesn't include the people that never, when they had it, never got tested.
Right.
So that, that's where that 99% comes in. That's a little bit of a gray area. Because everybody, everybody that had it didn't get tested.
There's another interesting statistic nationwide, it's kind of limited, but somebody reported, some doctor for the Drug Administration, reported that if a person is 85 in a hospital with Corona, probability of dying is 60%. If you're 25 in the hospital with Corona, probability is 2%. So that's kind of a wide range, 85 and 25, but still shows the significance, it's an indicator of the significance of vulnerability of older people.
Well, it's not just old, not just the elderly, but even younger folks that have some kind of underlying condition, diabetes, diabetic, those types, that is really, really makes the virus worse.
At the testing locally, do you still have to have some symptoms from the test, or can anyone just walk up and get tested?
Pretty much anybody can get tested. As a matter of fact, tomorrow, June 30th, we're doing testing at the Doyle Community Center. There's no appointment necessary, no doctor referral or anything, they're gonna be from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, they're gonna be testing, you just show up and they'll test you.
But that's, how long has it been that anyone can just walk up and get tested?
The last two or three times we've done the mobile testing, we've done the just walk-up, is what we call it.
Doug, that particular test that they'll be doing, how long till you get a result?
Well, Texas Military Forces is doing it, so it's gonna go to a state lab, and the state labs have been running anywhere from 48 hours to a week.
Of course, with everything that's going on, we're reading all kinds of stuff, trying to figure out what to believe and whatnot. I did read an article in the New York Times this weekend about the first German cases back in January, and some of you may have read that. What concerned me about it was evidently there is, there was a very active and robust debate between the professionals back there about whether or not, if you were asymptomatic, whether or not you could spread COVID. And apparently, they've now concluded that in fact, people who think they're normal, who are not showing any symptoms whatsoever, who usually have, were not part of the early testing group because they were asymptomatic, can actually spread this disease. Which means that as we sit in this room socially distanced apart, we don't know, even if we feel good, even if we don't show any symptoms, we don't know if we have it. It's a pre-symptomatic condition. And so that's something that's new to the formula for me, I didn't realize that if you were, you know, that you had to at least show some symptoms, but apparently, this disease can be spread with just normal people.
You can have it and get rid of it and never have symptoms.
That's right. That's right. And so for those of us that were here, back in the early stages, when we were pretty much shut down, we did pretty good. Once the governor opened us up, and everybody started coming into the hill country for their recreation, because this is the recreation hotspot of Texas, look what happened to us. And these people came in, probably didn't even know they were sick, probably left, never showed any symptoms of it whatsoever, and here we sit, trying to fight through this thing.
There's one other interesting piece of information, and that is, in Texas, I think the May the 1st is when a lot of the clampdown was, in, in.
May 1st is when they rolled out the open.
Yeah, okay.
We came, we went 50% May 1.
Right, okay, correct. But there was alleged that some of the increase or the spiking around the nation was because of the, and I'll just say it, rioting, okay, because of that. But in Kerr County, we didn't have very many people that were demonstrating, but that, very small. So our uptick is not the cause of anybody congregating to demonstrate, so it's a little bit, you know, different than what they're alleging could be happening in the nation, causing, because of the demonstrations being the cause for the uptick, so.
I think you're absolutely right. And chronologically, the, the first opening was May 1, and we were allowed to go to 50%. I think we were probably the most populous county in the, in the state that went to 50% on that first, first opening. Second opening was May 18, and our numbers started to go up. We went from having, we were around five below 10, and then we started jumping up. And then you had Memorial Day weekend, in between the, the opening, the rest of the state, to 50% on May the 18th, and the Memorial Day weekend, and then rolling out Phase 3, which were the gyms and the bars. That, if you look at it, all of our numbers coincide exactly with those dates.
Well, so does the increase in testing.
Yes, and the testing, yeah.
You cannot conclude one thing or the other.
It's both.
The testing increased as we opened up, so we might have always been at the same steady pace, but the, the testing increased, so there's no way to draw a conclusion from what you've said.
Both will vary. They both contribute to it.
They're both, they both are variables.
They're not independent variables, is that right?
I think another part of it, I think it's been the most asked, the demographics of who has it publicly, and in the region-wise, it's the highest group is what, 20 to 35, something like that now. And anecdotally, from friends of mine, it was their college-age kids, they caught it and brought it home. And that's a big part of it, and it's that young group, so, and they've all been almost asymptomatic without a doctor, they haven't got tested for 40%.
There's a lot more things that are spread by people that are asymptomatic than just this virus. A lot of things, we're exposed to stuff all the time, we don't know what we're getting exposed to. When you get your change back at the convenience store, the guy behind the counter had the regular old flu, you get a little dose of it, your immune system builds back up. The thing that concerns me is everybody acts as if this is a death sentence. It's not an automatic death sentence, the recovery rate is 99%.
Now, with that said, before you get away, Doug, because we know, we know what we're about to start.
I tried to run.
Okay. No, I just, I just want to, I want to go over with you and make sure that, that I've got it right, so that people get the correct information. The governor declared the state of disaster, made his proclamation back in March, and, and we followed suit with that. And that proclamation suspended certain powers and authority that local governments had, and meaning that the county judges and the mayors could not enter any orders that would be inconsistent with the governor's orders. Is that correct?
Correct.
And then recently, what, with the San Antonio and Austin City Councils, and Bear County, Travis County, the governor released some of that and gave back some powers to the local governments. And that was that, that local governments could mandate the wearing of masks to businesses. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes, sir.
And that's the only local, that's the only power under the Emergency Powers Act for nat, for states of disaster that has been returned to the local government.
That's correct.
Okay. And as I understand it, we're getting ready to go to Agenda Item Number 1.2, which is every week, every seven days, we review this proclamation that I made as to the state of disaster, right?
Correct.
And this court has the power, the authority, to terminate that proclamation. And at, at the end of this, whenever we get to the end, just like we did back with, with Hurricane Harvey, we'll, we'll have a meeting, and we'll all vote to stop it, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, so the people know the order of where we are in this cycle and what it takes. This court does not have the authority to issue that proclamation, only the county judge does, but this court does have the authority to terminate that state of disaster. Does everybody understand that?
Just on some point, you said the governor relaxed the local entities and require, or require businesses to require masks. There's nothing in that that says that any local county judge or mayor can mandate you have to wear them in the public. You have to be, it's only a business can do it. Therefore, the most we can do is allow or require businesses to wear masks. But we cannot require individuals to wear them in public.
I got the quote right here, and this is from Abbott. "We want to make sure individual liberty is not infringed upon by government, and hence government cannot require individuals to wear masks. Local governments can require store businesses to require masks. They've always had the opportunity and ability, just like they can require people to wear shoes and shirts, these businesses can require people to wear face masks."
But it says store businesses, not all businesses.
What's a store?
I don't know.
It says stores and businesses.
Stores and businesses, okay. People, not businesses.
You're, you're our Emergency Management Coordinator, and I just wanted to make sure that I had from you exactly where we stand with regard to what we can and can't do. We cannot require individuals to wear masks.
That's correct. To stores and businesses.
And when I say we, me, as the county judge, I cannot enter an order that requires people to wear masks in public.
Correct.
I can enter an order that requires businesses to do it.
That's correct.
This court cannot do that.
That's correct.
But the court can terminate it.
Yes, sir.
So people kind of wonder, why have I called this public debate? And I'm getting ready to release you and let you go back to work, as we have this public debate. It's because the mayor and I, at the beginning of this, have tried to work together, and if you've noticed, that the county and, and the city have pretty much been in lockstep with what we're doing to try to manage this COVID-19 crisis. I asked the mayor to let this court discuss and have this public debate before he makes his decision, because we're trying to do things together. And I sense that the debate's gonna be much more lively in these halls than it would be across the street. So that's, that's the purpose of it, and so that's to help us know exactly what we can and can't do in this emergency situation. Any other questions for Doug?
Just one other thing, Judge, the only way to mitigate this virus, it's not gonna go away, it's here for good. The only way to mitigate it is to do just like you're doing, and that's wear a mask. Social distancing, washing your hands, proper hygiene, those are the things that are gonna keep you from getting this, is if you don't wear a mask, at some point sooner or later, you're gonna run into somebody that's got the virus, and you're gonna catch it.
Doug, is there, so if you wear a mask, you won't get the virus?
That's not a guarantee.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, you can't make that statement.
That's right.
You can't make a statement that you have to, the only way to do it is wear a mask.
I'm just following the guidelines.
And, and the type of masks that are out in the public right now, no one knows, they're not up to any standard or testing, so no one knows if they're of any value at all, unless you're wearing a N95. And then, there's other, it's a question as to how you, if you're wearing it properly. So I don't think you can make that statement, Judge.
Doug, the one thing I might ask is, I know you want to escape, but you might hang around just in case we want to ask you a question later.
Okay, sure, thank you.
If you don't mind, hang out with Jody or something, but Sharkley's.
You were that close.
Yeah.
Doug, you're doing a great job, we appreciate all your doing.
Appreciate it, Judge, thank you, sir. I'll hang out outside.
Okay. Okay, this is the previews, item 1.12, and we do this every week. Consider, discuss, and take appropriate action regarding the local state of disaster due to a public health and economic emergency proclamation that I signed on March the 24th, 2020, and was extended until terminated by order of the Kerr County Commissioners' Court on March the 30th. And so every week, we come in here to see is the court ready to terminate that proclamation? And so the floor is open for a discussion about terminating the proclamation. Is anybody ready to do that?
Yeah, ready to leave it open.
Well, we were supposed to leave it open to apply for grants, especially for the sheriff, but this conversation we're about to have is the very reason I wanted to close it out before, just so everybody understands.
And I made the statement that I didn't feel we were overreaching, and, and so we could leave it in place for the grants and what have you, to help save our local taxpayers' money.
And I think we leave it in place for Agenda Item 1.3.
Okay, with that segue, I'm gonna call Agenda Item 1.3, which is to consider, discuss, and take appropriate action to determine whether or not to make it mandatory or voluntary to wear masks in businesses throughout the county. I put that on the agenda because this debate needs to happen publicly, and we need, what I'd like to see is a vote, up or down, whichever way this court wants to go. And some of you may be asking yourselves, well, Judge, if you've got the power to do it, why don't you just do it? Because they'll terminate it next Monday if they don't want me to do it. And besides, the only way we're gonna get through this whole thing is together. We need to stop fighting with one another about these issues and figure out how to start working together to try to help the community and work for the common good. So with that, the floor is open for a discussion with regard to whether or not we're gonna order masks mandatory to wear in businesses throughout the county.
May I, Judge?
Yes.
Probably like other commissioners, I've received a lot of correspondence from people regarding this issue. A good thing is that it says that they looked at our agenda, or the words get spread around, I mean, a lot of inquiries on that and comments. An interest in, and I'd say 95% of the people that I heard from, it's been mandated to wear masks in businesses or stores, consistent with what the governor says. An interesting statistic, or way I looked at this, is, is that our median age in the county is almost 50, it's 47. So that says that we're about 50/50. People greater than 50, people less than 50. If you take those two categories and you say, what is the impact if we were to mandate, or if the judge were to mandate masks? It's, it's an inconvenience and it's an attack on personal liberty to mandate wearing masks. So that's, that's the impact. On people older than 50, and especially at the upper age of, of that group, the, the impact can be very large, okay? It can be critically ill, seriously ill, or even death. So I think the second group of that has got a lot more interest in mandating, mandating masks being worn. So it's pretty, pretty obvious for me, from what I've heard and when I look at that statistic, that it's a good thing to do. And I don't know if you're ready for a motion, but I have a motion.
No, let, 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 let me talk about process, because we, we're gonna have to do this very orderly. What my intent today is, is to try to trigger a thumbs up or a thumbs down vote on whether or not masks will be mandatory in Kerr County. And to do that together, as a court.
On business.
Regardless of what powers I have.
You need to be careful in what your, your statement, mandating businesses have the, have to do it.
Yeah.
It's not mandated in the public, whereas it's mandated in businesses, and there's a big, big difference in that statement.
But we put another burden on businesses, just like we have them collect taxes for the state, now we're gonna have them police people. And the business community does a lot of junk for the state of Texas, and now it would be the same thing for the county of Kerr. And you put an extra burden on the people that are the lifeblood of the economy in this community.
Can I make a suggestion? Why don't we get to the?
But I want, I want to go over the process, because everybody needs to know the process. And you got a little speech that goes along with this. I've had a very, very interesting weekend. My telephone, my private telephone with my private law office number of the last 25 years, is in the hands of our court coordinator over here, because I can't manage it and manage this meeting. I use that, that number, my personal phone number, my, my professional phone number, for people to call into the court because of this COVID-19 and the relaxed rules so that you don't have to appear in person. And I can't tell you, and, and I get my county emails on that little phone, too. This is my personal phone, that other one is my, my, my business phone. And I probably have had between voicemail messages, text messages, and emails, somewhere in the neighborhood of 100 to 150 calls this weekend. This morning alone, we're already looking at 25 or 30. And what the people are doing is calling up and telling me their opinion. In fact, most of them call me and say, I vote, I vote yes, I vote no. That's not what, what, what I invited when, when I met with the mayor and gave the public announcement last week. What I said was, we would address them here in open court, like we do every week, and we use that phone for the call-in. And of all the 150 calls that I got, two people did it right. And those two people who did it to me, called in to me to do it right, what they did was they asked to be contacted so that they could call in this morning. And, and the way we're gonna do this, is just like we always do, what our local rules require, is you come to the podium, or if it's the phone calls, the phone will be put here by the speaker, you announce your name and your address, and you're limited to three minutes to comment. Right now, I've got 25 people signed up to speak just on this one topic. I got another stack over here to talk about fishing at the dog park. So we're gonna be, we're gonna have a busy morning. Everybody, we want to hear everybody, we want to try to make time for everybody. The briefer you can be, the better. We know this is basically gonna, at the end of the day, be a thumbs up, thumbs down vote on imposing mandatory masks for businesses, to be clear. My plan is, just so you know, I know you offered to make a motion, is I will make the motion at the end of the discussion to do it. I have the power, I'll make the motion. If there is no second, then the motion dies for a lack of a second. And the vote, in that case, you'll see, would be effectively 4-1 against wearing masks, requiring businesses to wear masks. If there is a second- If there is a second, we'll then do like we always do, just routinely, we'll take a raise-your-hand vote, and we'll have a vote at the end of the process. And once we do that, then we'll know which way to proceed. Is this going to be mandatory, or is it going to be strongly recommended? So everybody's on the same page?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. You going to start in?
I'd start in.
Okay. You start.
There's a couple of things that I think ought to be said first, and that...
Well, this is Sheriff Rusty Hoser, the Hair Hoser. You've got to identify everybody when you come up.
And it's what Region 8 put out a few weeks ago about how they count cases and how they do things. And I'm going to read it verbatim so that nobody misunderstands it. It says that they're making some changes to their reporting, now reporting aggregate case counts. Over the past several weeks, we have seen case counts rise significantly in Region 8. The increase in cases has caused our team to reach a threshold where we are unable to complete investigations on the same day we receive the report of a case. We have decided that reporting total aggregate case counts will give you a better picture of the overall case counts as we continue to work through the investigation. The Region 8 team will continue to work diligently through the case workload, and will investigate cases and report them to you as the investigation is completed. What is an aggregate count? An aggregate count is a total number of reported cases, whether or not we have completed the investigation. When we receive a lab result, the result goes through a review. We must determine if the review meets a case definition. See below for the case definition. We also must verify the address if it is known, so the case can be attributed to the correct jurisdiction or county. Then we attempt to contact the individual so we can complete the case investigation. Once the investigation is complete, we notify the county of the result. Not until we notify the county do we add the result to our case counts. At the beginning of the COVID-19 pandemic, the turnaround time for this process was less than 24 hours. As the number of cases has increased, we are experiencing a backlog and can no longer complete the investigation in 24 hours. We want counties to know the total number of reported cases so they have a clearer picture of the trends in their jurisdiction. We will now include a new column in our daily COVID cases at a glance, table titled Pending Investigation. The numbers in the pending investigation will be added to the overall case count. How will this affect your numbers? Some jurisdictions that are experiencing increasing case reports and testing will see a significant increase in numbers compared to what was previously reported. Others may see no changes. This all depends on the number of test results received in a given day for each jurisdiction. Additionally, active counts will increase initially because active cases are calculated by the total case count minus those that are not recovered. All right. And then it goes into reminder of definitions, and I think this is important. Reminder of definitions. A confirmed case of COVID-19 is one that is laboratory confirmed in a clinical specimen using a molecular test such as PCR test. A probable case of COVID-19 is one that is not laboratory confirmed by PCR, but that may meet case definition through a combination of symptoms, exposure history, and other lab tests. So it's not even a COVID test. This... Let's see. The purpose of a probable case definition is to identify cases that may not be able to receive a confirmatory test. This may be due to their isolation status or because they have mild symptoms that do not require a healthcare visit. Both confirmed and probable cases are considered cases and are included in your accounts. And I think that's key.
We're okay with the count. We're trying to get onto the math.
But what I'm saying is, I'm not sure how accurate our counts really are because they're probable. Now, as sheriff, I will tell you one other thing. I have not seen yet where restricting business or making business have every patron they have or every employee wear a mask is constitutional, okay? And when our country lets people go out and protest and tear up stuff and kill cops and injure cops and all that, and none of them go to jail for it, I'll be damned if I'm going to put somebody in our jail for violating masks.
Well, you answered it. So there's no... In the county, you would not intend to enforce a business requiring patrons to wear masks?
Somebody's got to show me where it's constitutional, and I haven't seen that. I'll uphold my oath of office as far as constitutionality, and I'll have everybody that works for me uphold that office. But you're going to have to show me where it's constitutional, not just because a county judge or a governor or a mayor says, this is what I want to do.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. You have someone on the phone? Jody, do we have anybody on the phone yet? She's covered up. I believe that Mr. Ted Schulenberg is here.
Judge, a lot of these are upstairs in the district courtroom, and if you'll give us one, I know you've got some in here, but if it was kind of get them down.
The two that I'm giving priority to are Ted Schulenberg and Frank Cybert.
Ted Schulenberg. Here's Frank.
Frank?
And I'll get the...
Well, go ahead, Frank, if you would come up. If you'd come to the podium. And just let me explain why you're getting priority. It's because you listened to what I said, and you called in on the phone, and you asked to be put on this... For us to call to get you on this.
Well, it's been here early.
Well, but they've been calling me all weekend, and you and Ted are the only ones that did exactly what I asked you to do, so I'm going to let you go first.
I appreciate that.
And just give us your address.
My name is Frank Cybert.
Oh, Frank, okay.
My address is 2546 Wallace Creek Room, which is a Medina address, but the house is located in Kerr County. We voted in Kerr County for 30 years. Difficult not to discuss this emotionally, because we're not dealing with the issue here that is being based on logic and numbers. The declaration, Judge...
Yes?
The declaration that you made as emergency management was to try to prevent a health and an economic disaster.
That's right.
There is no health disaster, and the economic disaster that is forthcoming is one that you're aiding. The reasoning behind this is that we've taken a look at the numbers. We've got a 99% recovery rate across all age groups. However, if you take a look at the total population of Kerr County, we're taking a look at .001% of the population that is contracting this. Let's say it's twice that much. Let's say it's five times that much. If it is five times that much, it's still in the 100ths of a percentile range. And it also means that our mortality rate has gone down. Your decisions on doing this cannot be based on logic or numbers. There's simply nothing that backs that up. Nothing that backs it up. So the decision must be being based on something else. And the only two things that I can foresee here is either out of fear or out of politics. Your view on what you have said multiple times here that you have the power to do this doesn't make it right whatsoever. What the sheriff just said, very honestly, what your disaster manager has implied is that these things that you're calling on are not proven, not in one bit. Face masks alone, and the position on face masks alone, have been changed three to four times by the CDC and in turn by the state of Texas. And so you are now arbitrarily deciding to take face masks and imposing them on your citizens and on your business, very honestly, probably without the moral right to do it. So I have to ask you, what are you basing this decision on? You basing it on fear? I can understand that. We all fear stuff. Are you basing it on politics and your worldview? That is my guess. My guess is that you feel like you know better.
Are you talking about me?
You. Because as I see this right now, there are two pro votes that have already been... Said that they're going to vote for it. You've got two possible no votes. And Mr. Harrison is a swing vote over here. He is the ex-ag teacher. Would no more treat a herd of cattle from one disease...
Thank you.
That only one has?
Thank you, Mr. Cybert.
My time's up?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, I'm trying to stop it.
I'll bring the next one in.
Okay.
And if you will...
Mr. Jackie.
If you will announce one ahead of them, they can hear you upstairs, so they'll go ahead and come down.
Yeah. Put somebody on deck.
Those ones you add in that same order. Those were already in that order.
Okay.
And the next one is Mr. Schulenberg. I'll bring him in, and he wanted this handled out.
Yeah, he's right here.
Are you ready for him, Your Honor?
I'll pull him out. Give him one hard.
I'm going to put him right here.
How do I do this thing?
I speak now?
No, not yet.
Are you timed now?
I will, yeah, as soon as he starts.
Okay. Mr. Schulenberg, please state your name and address.
My name is Ted Schulenberg. I've been a resident of Kerr County for 25 years. My current address is 221 Canyon Creek Lane in Kerrville. Public health officials nearly all agree that if one must be in public, the best way to minimize the risk of being infected by COVID-19 is social distancing and wearing a mask. And I recommend that the Commissioners Court, I understand that maybe it's only the judge mandate, and I understand that maybe it can only be the commercial establishment, not individuals. In any event, I hope that you make, to the extent possible, wearing a mask in commercial establishments a requirement and that you enforce it. If you do, there's an excellent chance that we can avoid having an epidemic in Kerr County. If we don't, we might still avoid it. But the risk is too high and the reward is too low to take that chance. At birth, the average life expectancy in this country is 78.17 years. For men, it's a couple of years less, and for women, it's a couple of years higher. This community has a disproportionately high number of elderly citizens. I'm one of them. And I heard Tom Moser earlier say that the dividing line between age 50 and under is about 47% of the younger and about... Or older, and about 53% of the younger. So we've got a heck of a lot of senior citizens in this county, and you're the ones that are the most vulnerable. My companion, since I'm in this older group, tells me that I've already exceeded my expiration date. And that's not a bad analogy, because if I go to the refrigerator and take out some yogurt, I might see the... I might pay attention to the expiration date and might not, but at least I'll open it up. And if it looks green on top, then I'll throw it out, but otherwise, I'll probably eat it. My companion, boom, it's expired, and she'll throw it out. And that's kind of the feeling that I had, that Mr. Blue has about senior citizens. And the basis for saying that is that he has said that COVID-19 is not a death sentence, and it's not automatically going to kill you, which certainly is not automatically going to do it. But for some of us, it might be a death sentence. The fact is, if you're a senior citizen, there's an increasing chance that it will. I trust that he's aware that people over age 50 in Kerr County constitute 94% of all the deaths from COVID-19. That's a high percentage, if you...
Mr. Schulenberg?
Yes?
I'm sorry to interrupt, but your time's up. We've got a lot of people coming up. Appreciate you were wrong.
Thank you.
We have a call?
Well, we need a call now.
I'm over 60.
Yeah, we should have taken it. It was 2:50, so I just want them to call them back.
Is it 832 or 830? Area code?
No.
No, it's typed out.
Oh, then it's the 832. Yeah, we have some.
Yes?
This is Judge Kelly at Kerr County Commissioners Court. You asked to speak?
Yes, please, thank you. My name is Grant Shellhouse. Come in.
Uh-oh. Well...
I'm going to give it to Jody to call it back and get somebody else speaking in the meantime.
Yeah. Okay. Who's next on our list here, Jackie? The one on top?
Yeah.
Debbie LaFleur.
My name is Debbie LaFleur. I live at 410 Forest Ridge in Kerrville. We have a local restaurant. We've been in business 37 years, four generations. My grandbabies run around there just like everybody else, helping us table sometimes even. I don't feel that it is my job to police anyone. I've had calls, just like y'all have had calls, I've had calls at my restaurant over and over and over, what are you going to do? What are you going to do? We are going to be damned if we do and damned if we don't at this point. But I feel like that is a person's choice to wear a mask. I don't feel like it's my job to tell them they have to wear a mask to come into my business. I feel like if someone comes into my business and they have an underlying condition that they cannot wear a mask, it is... I feel like it is not my job to ask them, what is your underlying condition that you can't wear a mask? So that puts us in a bad situation. So, I mean, we are in a spot right now. We've gone through hell and back with this. And so already, already, we can't find help. The people that are our waitresses are on unemployment. They're making $4,000 a month on unemployment. They don't want to come back to work. So my daughter, who is an asthmatic, cannot wear a mask. She waits tables. I ask them to say, well, put her somewhere else. I can't. I have nobody to help do that. I mean, I don't have to help. So the mask situation, I mean, if you read about the mask, if you look at OSHA and it says cloth masks, they do not protect you. N95 masks, it protects you from breathing in, but not breathing out. When the air comes out, it's your breath. If you're a COVID, it's your breath going out into the air. Surgical masks are great in sterile environments, but not in normal environments. You can wear them 20 to 30 minutes, and they are no good anymore. So really, there's not a mask that's going to protect us from COVID. I encourage people, if they are sick and they have some underlying condition, to take and wear their mask. I encourage them to. But it's going to be hard for them to come into my restaurant and eat food with a mask on. I mean, that's... It's going to have to come off. At some point, it's going to have to come off to put food in their mouth. So how am I supposed to say, oh, no, you've got to leave a mask on? Now, how's that going to work? It's not. It's going to come off. I have a... This last week, we had a official from Kerrville that came in and ate with us and put a mask, his mask, in a chair, sit it down, went across the room, and had talked to people from out of town, from Honda... They were from Honda. And then come back and go to another table and sit there and talk to them, and leave their mask sitting in that chair. My waitress had to go and pick that mask up and take that dirty mask to the city officials. Now, if the city officials aren't following rules, I mean, you know, I mean, that's kind of the problem we have here, is that, you know, when all this was going on, and we were shut down, only hours ago, we took our boat and we went to Indian Lake. On the dam, there was 25 to 30 kids, unpoliced, but you're going to police me... On the dam, there was 25 to 30 kids, unpoliced, but you're gonna police me and not these kids. I talked to a police officer, and he said, we can't do anything, because it, it, that's not, we can't take care of that. I said, who takes care of it? Well, the game ward. Well, where's the game ward? I mean, somebody stop all this. So you're talking about the kids' rates of being-
Mr. LaFleur.
The kids going up, the, the numbers.
Thanks, thank you very much. We appreciate your time. Next.
This is Mr. Shellhouse on the phone here. Your battery died, that's why. He should, he ready to go, he should just-
Hello? If you would, please state your name and address.
Yes, Grant Shellhouse, 1407 Sidney Baker Street, Kerrville, Texas, 78028.
Okay, you may proceed.
Okay, thank you. The first argument against masks, uh, that they don't work, I, I don't really feel a need to address. I think it's pretty clear from the accumulation of research from a broad, diverse consensus of sources, um, that face masks significantly reduce the infection rate, and repeating that evidence isn't going to convince anyone who already will ignore it.
I can, I can.
I would like to address, however, the argument that requiring masks is an infringement on some sort of personal right to liberty. I've frequently heard supporters of face masks use seatbelts as comparison in response to this argument. Seatbelts are legally required for the sake of driver's safety, but I think this is an imperfect analogy. Not wearing a seatbelt presents a personal hazard that does little to endanger those around me. In contrast, wearing a mask is inconvenience for the sake of the common good. When I wear a mask, it's to predict those around me rather than myself, and I trust that my community will do the same to protect me. Furthermore, um, seatbelts and other safety measures being counted regularly are the status quo. They're an extraordinary flaw that puts them into place, and they have no expiration. A face mask mandate is an extraordinary measure that's a response to a specific threat. So maybe rather than seatbelts, a better comparison for legally mandating face masks for a set period of time is rationing and blackouts. Leading up to and throughout World War II, these were instituted. Citizens and businesses in coastal regions were required to turn out lights or use blackout curtains, a measure that proved effective in mitigating the damage from a Japanese submarine attack on the Oregon coast in 1942. Meanwhile, rationing was considered a common good for the war effort, and affected every American household. Rubber was conserved by eliminating the purchases of new tires in 1942, and the so-called victory speed limit was instituted to conserve rubber. Purchasing of certain foods was limited, and when voluntary gas rationing proved ineffective, mandatory rationing was instituted. While these measures weren't always well-received by the public, they themselves were limiting freedoms of how much we could purchase.
Mr. Shellhouse?
They were largely seen as a shared, temporary side, yes.
Mr. Shellhouse? If you have something to say about masks, we're ready to listen to it, otherwise, we've got too many people to listen to to go on about what happened in World War II. So tell, tell me something about masks.
I, this, this is a comparison, um, where the sacrifice of, of few for a brief period of time was for a common good. It, it, we're in unprecedented times, and it's a cliche to say so, but it's, I'm saying it's not unprecedented for Americans to collectively agree to self-limitation for our shared safety and flourishing. Um, but this dire moment that we're in is a matter of life and death, and to dismiss it otherwise would be callous. Um, so I'm urging you, the Commissioner's Court, to display the courage and wisdom needed to mandate that businesses require face masks for employees and customers. And I think it's a momentary sacrifice while worth the common good we gain. So that's my comparison to masks.
Okay. Thank you very much. We appreciate your input. Now, let me pass this back. And the way I'm gonna take these is in the order that they came in, and so these other ones that are to be called, that came in at 9:30 or so, we'll call them when they're, we get to that time period. The next ca, the next one on the list here is Leanne Kruger. And yours was here at 8:05. You've been waiting a long time to say?
Yes, sir. I'm done.
You're welcome.
Uh, I'm gonna go quickly. I've got a lot to say. So, uh, my grandfather fought in World War II. He was at Pearl Harbor, at Pearl Harbor, not anywhere else he was there. He didn't fight for our government to overstep their boundaries, abuse their power, and, and force businesses to police countless people, to tell them, you have to do this, and you have to do that. That's theft. Regarding the item at hand, Governor Abbott, Governor Abbott already addressed it in Order G28, page four, line 14, I've already submitted that for the minutes. As an employee at a 37-year-old restaurant that has faithfully served this community for all of this time, and consider all of you that come out to eat with us, and everyone who's worked with us family, we treat them like family. We do everything we can to make sure that they are taken care of, properly sanitized, everything that we can make possibly clean, sterile, we do. I cannot force a customer to wear a mask any more than I can force them to take medication. I have asthma. What am I supposed to do? Not one person has answered me. I asked the mayor directly, face to face, what do I do? He had no answer. And I doubt that any of you have an answer for me either. I can't just stop working. I have kids to take care of. I have a diabetic baby that has to have $2,800 of insulin a month. That means I can't sit home, and I won't. It's not my job to sit home. I have a job. My seven-year-old thinks it's ridiculous that we have to tell adults to wash their hands. That's on the adults. That's on the adults. I have to tape up signs and say, wash your hands. I wanna know how many of you have licenses, permits, or, or any kind of certifications to tell me how to sanitize things? Because I do. I have five food service managers, as well as an entire staff that's full of food-certified employees, for handling and sanitizing a restaurant to keep public safety at a tight. So I wanna know, are there any of you that have those certifications? I doubt it. I wanna know why a baseball tournament, you're telling us that in the guise of personal safety and, and public safety, that we all have to wear a mask, but the municipality allowed a baseball tournament to be relocated from San Antonio, but San Antonio said, no, you may not have your tournament here? And brought hundreds of kids and their families to Kerrville to play at the baseball fields yesterday. So my safety, you're bringing people from out of town, from a high infection zone, to our area, and then screaming at the top of your lungs that you have the power to keep us all safe by putting a mask on us? But what am I supposed to do? Because my oxygen level dropped to 87 after 15 minutes of wearing a mask. I can't do that. But you wanna tell me that I have to? Because I have a job. It's wrong. It's an abusive power, and what is it, when does it stop? Are you gonna tell me I need a dot vaccination next? Are you gonna take my guns next, because it's Kerr County said so? Where does it stop?
Thank you, Ms. Kruger.
Vote for Ed Parker, 2002.
Next is Bill Rector.
Thank you.
Dr. Bill Rector.
Honorable Commissioners, Honorable Judge Kelly, appreciate the opportunity to visit with you today. We are, as the CDC, the Vice President of the United States, and the Governor says, time is running out for us to control coronavirus in this, in our state. Controlling this virus is like a three-legged stool. One of those is hand washing, the other is social distancing, and that third leg is wearing a mask. Our Constitution, I, when I read it, I don't see that it says we can't wear a mask, we're not supposed to mandate wearing a mask, but it does say in the preamble that we, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union and promote the general welfare, does sort of give us the mandate to try to protect people from serious disease. Let me talk to you about masks and face coverings, and to make sure my education was correct, I went by and pulled a few articles and read those. This mask that I wear protects you from me by 80%. I'm only protected from you by 10% for this mask. So I wear this mask for y'all in this room, not for me. And that's gonna be the key to trying to control this virus, is to have enough people wear the mask so that the viruses that are spread out there, that we can inhale, people can inhale, are minimized and decreased. That's the key. I also here today represent HDBA, Historic Downtown Business Alliance, which is 35 merchants, restaurants, and building owners in downtown Kerrville. One of the things that we need to do, and that wearing masks will do, is to restore our economy. For people to come into our stores, for people to come into our restaurants, they have to feel safe. A Kerrville Daily Time survey shows that 51% of our population are not coming out because they don't feel safe. And that's 51% of your customers. They're not coming into your stores, they're not coming into your restaurants, because they don't feel safe there. And how are we gonna make them feel safe? We are going to see that when they come into the stores, people are wearing masks, and they are protected from coronavirus. Judge Kelly, I would encourage you to join the Judges of Bear County, Travis County, Dallas County, Tarrant County, El Paso County, and Barris County in mandating masks, be warned to try to compel, to try to control this coronavirus. It is a serious problem. It is nothing to laugh at. It is not a hoax. It is a serious, serious disease. And if you don't wanna look at the, if you don't wanna look at the numbers, 84 cases in our county, look at the numbers of hospitalizations. That's, doesn't have anything to do with testing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Rector.
Judge, if I may, let me ask Dr. Rector one question.
Yes, sir.
Number one, you're a medical doctor. Number two, you mentioned 10%. That's a statistic I haven't heard of being effective protecting yourself. Is that a, just a real simple answer? Is that a scientifically demonstrated statistic?
There are, I've got some articles here that I can give you that are-
Okay.
-trying to prove that with using mannequins and other simulated things, and it's, it's pretty well being proven that the masks, surgical masks particularly, don't seal, but they prevent-
Okay, so there is, there is scientific data to support it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
They, 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 they don't seal, and as it pointed out, the N95 mask is worse for spreading it, because the exhaled breath is not filtered at all.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got, that was number six?
Seven.
That was six, that was seven?
Count Rusty, seven.
Okay. Well, I don't know if we count Rusty.
Count him twice.
But, uh, we've got 27 signed up to speak, and I know we've got at least four of you here in the room that have already spoken. And what we're trying, they've got room up at the courtroom upstairs, where you can see everything, what's going on, but that way, we've got more seats to open up, so the sheriff can rotate people through, and we get the speakers done a lot quicker. I appreciate everybody coming down to the court today.
Who's next, Judge?
Is it Kathy Reader, Redder?
And if you'll announce on a couple ahead, they can hear it upstairs, it is on the large TV.
Lives at 218 Fourth Street in Ingram. Kathy R E D E R, it looks like.
Who would be exact? He's asking you to announce ahead, Judge, so they'll be prepared.
And then the one behind that is Angela Schlader, Schlader?
Schlader.
Schlader? And then Riley Rector? And then Brandon Mary, I think it is. Okay. Kathy?
No, not yet, Your Honor.
Okay.
But Brad is here, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Jump ahead to him.
Brandon?
Yes, sir.
Mary, okay. Brandon Mary. I'm sorry, what?
Eric.
Eric, okay. It's an A, okay. Sorry.
341 West Water Street, Kerrville, Texas. Good morning, my name is Brandon, I'm a part of the Texas Fidel. We're a family-operated business located here in Kerrville. During the lockdown, to this day, we've been doing our part to keep our clients safe and our shareholders, and help prevent the spread of COVID. We did this because it was our own choice. We chose, uh, we choose not to wear masks for many reasons, and part of it is due to my wife's hearing disability and the lack of effective communication during our meetings when masks are worn. There are many studies discount, discounting what the doctors said regarding the effectiveness of masks from many groups, which I'll not quote due to time. On March 8th, Dr. Fauci said during an interview with 60 Minutes, people should not be walking around wearing masks. Masks do not provide the protection people think they do. The U.S. Surgeon General stated during an interview on Fox and Friends on March 31st that masks don't help. He also followed up on Twitter, said, don't wear masks. This was also reaffirmed by the CDC and the World Health Organization at that time. As you know, all businesses are required to follow OSHA guidelines to promote a safe work environment for its employees. CFR 291910146 states, spaced with readings of less than 19.5% of oxygen, or to be considered oxygen-deficient, which requires slew of permanent testing and safety requirements prior to entering that space. There are countless tests that prove wearing masks reduce the oxygen level below this 19.5% threshold, putting the wear of the mask in danger. As reported in Capitol, uh, recent Capitol Report newsletter in response to what's happening in Bear County, Senator Bob Hall stated, business owners will become a de facto law enforcement arm, but the only tool they will have to enforce the mask requirement is to refuse to sell to their customers and to kick them out of the store hallway. These are the same businesses that the government recently declared, declared nonessential and ordered shutdown for months. I agree with Senator Bob Hall. Private businesses should not police its own citizens, rather Kerr County residents should be allowed to make their own decision to wear masks. We do not need to heavy-handed government punishing businesses and making them the enforcers of tyranny. If you start dictating what businesses are required to do, where does it stop? We are walking a fine line into the induction of authoritarianism, and we believe the government needs to know its boundaries and stop operating from a place of fear, which leads to irrational decision-making. As it, uh, just to make clear, I do not support this mandate. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy, is it Redder?
Ryder.
Ryder? Please state your name and address.
Okay, I'm Mr. One Timer. Kathy Ryder, 218 Fourth Street, Ingram, Texas. And just before I get started, I wanna say, first off, I respect all of you and your positions. Do not take any of my comments as a disrespect to any of y'all. However, I do not support your mask mandate. I do want you to know, I am in several high-risk categories, and the first thing I did was, like everyone else, I reacted out of fear. However, I did not turn to my local government to say, oh, my God, protect me, what can you do? I elected you, I need you to make rules and do something. I went to my local doctor, the doctor that I see for my illness, and I said, what should I do to protect myself? In that conversation, at no point did he tell me to wear a mask everywhere I go. Um, so that being said, I think it's my responsibility and others, I know we're all afraid, none of us wanna get sick, to go to our doctors and seek their advice, their professional advice, to deal with this. Everybody's kinda stolen my thunder, including where Steve, thank you, on how to deal with this, and if you pass this mask mandate, how is it gonna be policed? And basically, because of the governor's orders, you're asking essentially minimum-wage workers, who already deal with an angry, scared public, to police this mask mandate. And what you're gonna have, and what I've dealt with already, is confrontation from the public. I've been the only customer in a store not wearing a mask, and had another customer come in within a six-feet distance with a mask so loose that I could see her nose, and I've got a friend that's gonna speak on the mask more professionally and confront me about not wearing a mask. She essentially wasn't wearing one either. Okay? So you're asking people that do not have the qualifications to police a mandate, which is nothing more than a glorified dress code. Because most of the people are tying bandanas around their face, wearing masks below their nose, and it does nothing. And I think it's gonna create more divide and more hate and discontent between an already divided public. It's, it's, what it's gonna do is for us that choose not to wear a mask, or have consulted with doctors that do not wear masks, would be like asking those that are proponents of the mask to ask you, as a Commissioner's Court, to tell them not to wear masks in public. That's what you're doing to the other half. So I think the most prudent, fair thing to do would be to keep doing what you're doing, and allow people that feel safe and comfortable to wear masks, to wear masks, and not harass that crowd. And for those of us who choose not to wear a mask, to not force us into this, and not harass us for not wearing the mask, and not punish us by taking away our freedoms to do our daily shopping, to go to the feed stores, to go to do handle business, day-to-day business that we have to handle as a society, and yet you expect us to pay our taxes and continue to tax us and make us, there's my timer, to do the things we have to do. None of that stops, but the rules continue, and bigger government is never the solution.
Thank you, Ms. Ryder. Ms. Angela Schlader?
Schlader. Hi, my name is Angela Schlader.
Hi, my name is Angela Schlader. I'm Dr. Angela Schlader, I'm a surgeon. I also teach medical students. The recent article published in Lancet on June 1st of 2020 is the article most commonly referred to when advocating for homemade masks used within communities mandated within communities and that community setting. I want to address this article and some fallacies that have been stated regarding the findings of this article. And in reference to the gentleman who said that the surgical masks are 80% effective, that is not a true number. There are more studies that point to closer to 30%. So the name of the article is Physical Distancing Face Masks and Eye Protection to Prevent Person-to-Person Transmission of MARS-CoV-2 and COVID-19. This is a review in a meta-analysis article written by Dr. Chu Edel. Strong findings indicate that protection increased with increased distance of one meter or more. Therefore, their recommendation is to social distance one to two meters between people. Face masks involved in the study were only limited to N95 respirators and similar masks and surgical masks and similar masks. The similar mask to the surgical mask is 12 to 16 layers of cotton. This is very tightly, tightly woven. At no point were homemade masks, whether they have sunflowers or bumblebees on them, they were not tested. It is also noted that the single-layer masks are only mentioned once in this article, and the statement is that they did not show the same protection as any masks. It is also very important to note that the stakeholders of this article include 3M, who is one of the major manufacturers of surgical and other respiratory masks. Their recommendation is physical distance and use of face masks and eye protection because they are, I quote, "acceptable and reassuring." They did not recommend them based on their effectiveness. Personal protective equipment, PPE, is what we call it in the medical community, is required in the hospital setting. It's very important to note that a homemade, single-layer mask is not sufficient and is not considered PPE and doesn't pass the test for any employee that wants to wear that. It's not sufficient at all. We are currently facing PPE shortages. Even if Kerrville had a super large budget to purchase one for every single citizen in this county, you wouldn't be able to get them. Cloth, single-layer masks are providing a false sense of security, and you can see this anytime you visit any store in Kerr County. People wear the masks incorrectly, you can see their nose, it has gaps, it should be tight-fitting, like your mask is tight-fitting around your face, that's how it should be. That is not what you're seeing in public. They're not fitted appropriately, and then they're contaminated because they're reused over and over and over. Then those contaminated masks are taken back out into the community to contaminate further. We need to be honest with our citizens and our community and let them know that the most effective way they can protect themselves is to wash their hands, avoid touching their face, and social distance. The masks are non-
Thank you, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bill, Riley Rector. Debbie Baron.
My name is Debbie Baron. I reside at 108 Hiller Verde here in Kerrville. I personally feel like wearing a face mask should be a personal choice. If you choose to wear it, that's your choice. If I choose not to wear it, that's going to be my choice. You don't feel safe being around people that don't keep their mask on, don't go around them. That's going to have to be a personal responsible choice of your own. Studies have shown that wearing a face mask reduces your oxygen intake from 21% down to about 17% over a period of time. This will create some health problems. Me personally, having almost died 11 years ago in a hospital due to a lack of oxygen, my doctor has already told me, "Do not, under any circumstances, wear a face mask." That is going to reduce your oxygen level, you're going to go and do the same thing that what happened to me 11 years ago. So as you can see from me, that's going to be a health hazard. I'm pretty sure I'm not the only one in Kerr County that has this problem. It's caused a lot of problems. When people are forced by a county to wear a face mask and this happens, what do you think your lawsuits are going to be? You don't think you're going to be lined up with lawsuits? Bet you all. And businesses requiring all employees to wear a mask is not going to work either. Take your restaurant kitchen workers, take your construction workers out in the heat, take your landscapers, kerosenes, out in the heat. Screen print shops like my own, also known as sweatshops, because of the mass amount of heat that those, where we dry our shirts at 750 degrees, and although we keep our temperature down to 60 degrees, you're still going to be more heated than somebody in a nice air-conditioned office as such. You're going to have health problems. I'm going to, I'm going to have lawsuits on me if I require my employees to wear face masks because they're not going to be able to breathe. I think we're going to be putting people in real danger. From what I've been told from local restaurants, grocery stores, Walmart, H&amp;B, every place I go into, they have all told me, they are wearing their mask to protect me. Okay, that's fine. You go into Japan and China where the pollution is so bad, you can't breathe outside. What are you wearing your mask for? To protect yourself. So are Japan and China using different masks than we're using? I thought we were all using the same mask here. So which is it? Are we protecting us, are we protecting you? I don't think anybody really has the answer. I'll be short and sweet today, I think this should be a voluntary thing. I do not think anybody, especially people like, that have health problems, should be forced to do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Debbie.
We had Riley somebody there.
Well, I think those two, Amy Rector and Riley Rector, I think they emailed and then just a statement. I don't know if you want to read it into the record.
We cannot read it into the record. They have-
Well, I don't think-
So, okay. Then the next one is Bobby Horton.
My dad.
I saw you over there.
Who's on deck?
Jennifer Dixon, Roman Garcia, Michael Pakel, and Jerry Wolf. Bobby, go ahead.
My name is Bobby Horton. I live at residence, my residence is at 160 Plough Trail, but I, my business is 44 Junction Highway. And my idea is, if you want to wear a mask, it's your choice. If I want to wear one, it's my choice. Again, Debbie was saying a mask reduces your oxygen intake from 21 to about 17%. And if you make me wear a mask in my business for eight hours, can you imagine what that's going to do to my body? Eight hours, 17%. Also, the size of the virus that we're talking about is 80 to 140 micrometer. That's the same thing, the weave that your mask is made out of is the same thing as a mosquito flying through a chain-linked fence. You're looking at the same thing because it is not, that virus can come through that mask just like a mosquito through a chain-linked fence. Before, the most deadliest area has been nursing homes. Now, don't you think the nursing homes make their people wear masks? And if that's the case, why are so many of them dying? Why aren't they all protected? Obviously, it's not protecting them. And again, studies have shown that the mask you're wearing, the gentleman that talked first a while ago with that homemade mask, 20% of the air that he breathes in comes through his mask, 80% was coming around his nose because you could see there was no protection. That does him absolutely no good whatsoever. And it's the same thing when you breathe out. It's like water, it takes the least, the path of least resistance. And if your mask isn't fitting good and tight like a surgical mask will, you're blowing all the air out the sides, so you're just pissing in the wind, as those stories says. Later, another deal, in the 50s and 60s and even in the late 90s, we had viruses very similar to this. Nobody even mentioned it, other than medical people. The media, and nobody ever said anything about it, and those viruses was just as deadly as the one we have today. But the media has blown it plumb out of proportion, which is unbelievable. Here again, a week ago, you'd ask somebody, "Why are you wearing the mask?" "I'm wearing it to protect me," or the, or them. Now, from what I hear y'all, well, not hear y'all saying, but I hear other people saying is that, "Oh, we want you to wear the mask to protect us from you." So here again, which is it? Are we wearing the mask to protect ourselves or somebody else? Nobody knows.
Thank you very much, Ms. Horton.
Thank y'all. God bless America.
Let's take, let's take a five-minute recess and assess where we are with all this. Okay, the court will come back to order. I'm trying to be practical and give everybody an opportunity to be heard. We've heard a lot of the same things, probably seven or eight times each now. I've got 28 people so far that want to be heard, and we've heard maybe 10 or so. What do I have to do, Donna?
12.
12?
If we count Rusty.
I don't count Rusty.
Okay.
So that's 11, that's 11 people that have gone out of their way to come to the court or call the court to let your opinions be known, which we appreciate. I'm trying to figure out how I'm going to handle the next, what did I forget? 16?
16, okay.
And we do have some business today that we have to do, so I'm trying to figure out how to balance this. We allow up to three minutes for each of you. I don't think it takes three minutes for you to tell us what you really want us to know. If there's any way that you could reduce that and be briefer, it would facilitate everybody being able to have a chance to tell us what they think, which is what we're trying to do, is to listen. So with that, let's go ahead and start again and see how this works. The next person is Jennifer Dixon. Yes, ma'am?
Hello, my name is Jennifer Dixon. I've been a citizen here of Kerrville for 36 years, and I would like to address, sorry, I live at 215 Kerrville South Drive here in Kerrville, Texas. I would like to address the issue of mask-wearing. I see a lot of people around here wearing cloth masks. I have a medical journal right here that states that cloth masks issue pose a health risk to you by putting, you have more risk for, more upper respiratory infections, it pushes viral loads down into your body.
We've, we've heard that over and over this morning. In fact, you brought a bunch of research-
Yes, sir, I have.
-that you were telling me about. Over 1,000 hours worth of research, it's about 100 pages, and you've delivered that to our emergency management coordinator?
I have it right here. I have part of it that I'd like to, to address as well. I know that we have a conglomerate and a numerous amount of elderly people in our community. From my research that I've done and numerous doctors, it's, the main problem is glutathione deficiency. And that, as you increase with age, glutathione is depleted from your body. That's why a lot of elderly are suffering from, from what's going on. Also, number one, whenever they originally thought that it was pneumonia going on in the lungs, it's multiple blood clots and pulmonary embolisms that's going on in the lungs and throughout multiple parts of the body. Many scientists are being treated, are treating that right now with anticoagulants and also a thing that's called NAC, which is, can be bought over the counter as well, and people can be using this as a supplement versus having to wait for a vaccine. There's natural remedies that are available, and I have these from infectious disease experts who are, who are suggesting these remedies. So I'm not just speaking from my point of view, these are infectious disease experts speaking from their point of view and their expertise and their knowledge. And they are using these methods to treat their patients in their practice at this moment. I'm friends with them on Facebook and I have contacted them personally, myself, via Messenger. So I, I do have quite a bit of information that I've been trying to pass on to not only the chief office, or to the chief of the hospital. I've also tried to contact KSAT 12, I've tried to contact News 4, I attempted to contact three hospitals in San Antonio.
Ms. Dixon, I appreciate that. You explained that to me at the break, and that's why I tried to get it to dub so we could kind of speed things up to try to get everybody heard.
Right.
Is there anything else that you'd like us to know?
Just that wearing masks puts even, especially the elderly, at risk by, by not having the proper amount of oxygen and also putting, you have more risk for upper respiratory infections.
So you're against?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you very much for coming down. Really appreciate that.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you for your research.
Thank you, sir. And where should I leave this?
Stay right. There we go.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Roman Garcia. Mr. Garcia.
Hi, good morning, Judge and Commissioners. My name is Roman Garcia. My address is 934 Beacon Street. This COVID-19 pandemic has had many effects on our daily lives, and I'm sure we're all ready to get back to normalcy, and I know I am. I know one of the things that we're obviously all talking about is the necessity of proper hygiene, and such as wearing a face mask. But not everyone wants or feels the need to do so for their own reasons. And this has left our local officials to feel like it's up to them to establish orders that requiring to do so. Now, today, we're here to consider whether this court should make it mandatory or voluntary to wear face masks in businesses throughout the county. However, I don't believe that government-mandated regulations is the way to go about this issue. In Executive Order Number 26 issued by the Governor Abbott on June 3rd, he reiterates what some of his previous orders already stated, and that local government cannot impose a civil or criminal penalty or, on previous, for individuals for not wearing a face mask. However, he did state that they can require businesses to then require their employees and customers to do so. So this puts the burden on enforcing the law in this case in the hands of businesses by forcing them to either refuse to sell to the customer and end up kicking them out if they fail to comply, or risk the penalty, which is probably going to be a costly fine. What this has created is essentially a loophole for the government to now not only require individuals to wear face masks, but employees of the businesses as well. Those individual businesses should be able to make the decision for themselves, free of any influence of the government, in the same way some restaurants and stores have dress codes that require shoes and shirts. Not all have those regulations. I believe Texans and every other citizen in this country should be free to decide for themselves on whether or not to wear the face mask and to not use the heavy hand of the government to punish the businesses and require them to enforce such a tyranny of freedom. We must ensure that we maintain our fundamental right to make these decisions for ourselves with limited government intervention, not only for our individual citizens, but for the businesses. And to that end, I urge that each of you leave it up to the businesses of this great community to decide whether they want to require their employees and their customers to wear the face masks. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Roman.
Michael Piper.
Good morning, gentlemen. Judge, thank you, Commissioners, thank you for hearing me out today. My name is Michael Piper, 806 Main Street, Kerrville, Texas. Now, let me start off by saying first and foremost that my wife and I both have parents in their 80s, and I don't want anybody to die. I don't want to wish any harm on anybody. But we are trampling on some civil rights here. We are talking about a fine line that y'all have to make a decision on, it sounds like today. But before you make that decision, let me make you an invitation. I work in a kitchen. Now, I'm shorthanded, so we're putting in, I've got cooks that put in 12-hour shifts sometimes. It's 140 degrees in there sometimes. Put a mask on, come in my kitchen. Any, any one of you guys are welcome. Of course, you have to get certified first. Okay? I want to speak on that matter right now. Myself and our counterparts across the county and across the state are mandated, certified, and heavily regulated to keep people safe from viruses and bacteria. All of a sudden, we're not trusted with that anymore, and we have to wear masks? We're talking about safety and health here of my employees. If y'all mandate my employees and one of them goes down in the middle of the floor, we don't get breaks, you know? We have to go by the customer's pace, not our own pace. We can't just say, "Okay, we deserve a 15-minute break now, let's go get some air and a Gatorade or whatever." It, it just don't work like that. We have to go by the pace of the customer or we lose our customers, you know? You know, they got 30 minutes for lunch, an hour for lunch, we got to get them in and out. And it is a matter of health and a matter of safety. Okay? I'm regulating myself by my customers. And I'll let you all know right now that when we were shut down and doing this PC, the single-serve, salt, peppers, sugars, everything, ketchups, they were having to squeeze out the ketchup packets. My customers were going, "Where's my salt and pepper packet? Where's my salt and pepper shaker? I want a bottle of ketchup." So you know what? I went back to it. We sanitize them, we do everything in between service. Guys, this is America. We have a thing called personal responsibility, and that's going by the wayside with our nanny state. Everybody thinks that the government needs to take care of them, I don't. I think the public can take care of themselves quite well. If you want to wear a mask, wear a mask. If you don't want to wear a mask, I'm not going to mandate my customers to wear- If you don't want to wear a mask, I'm not going to mandate my customers to wear a mask, and I'm not going to police my customers to wear a mask. They can take my health permit, they can shut me down. Either way, I'm out of business there. Or you can leave me alone and let me do my business. Speaking of regulation, I've got 30 entities in my pockets and, and regulating me. We're regulated enough, guys. I plead to you to vote no on this mandatory mask. My customers, I, I bet you it's 3% of people come through the door with a mask. They'll walk down the sidewalk with a mask, soon as they enter the door, they take the mask off. I don't get it. I'm an HEB. I shop for a living. I see, I'm, I'm certified, hand washing.
Thank, thank you.
Am I done?
Huh? Okay. Start over.
Anyway, I'm an HEB because I do, I shop there for a living. I'm there twice a week. I see violations all the time, the open mask, people not wearing them right, people wearing them over their mouth. They're touching things, even wearing gloves. Gloves is a false sense of security. I don't even mandate those in my restaurant, but you're safe in my restaurant because we wash our hands in between each contamination. We are certified, regulated, and mandated by the state to keep you all healthy when you come into our restaurants. We've been through SARS, HA1N1, what, what else? The bird flu, the swine flu. We've been through all of these flus and all of these viruses, and nothing's ever been said. Nothing's ever been said. Now, all of a sudden, we're not trusted to take care of you folks? You can trust us. We're professionals. I've been doing this for 30 years. I do it in my sleep. I implement these, I drive my wife and, and when my son live with me, I drove him crazy because of sanitary practices at home. Now, uh, I've, I've always found, and I'm going to say this not to offend anybody, but I've always found the city of Kerrville very anti-business. They will do everything they can to make it tough on the businesses instead of nurturing their businesses and, and stuff like that. Now, I say that in all honesty because I've been doing this 30 years, and man, I'm telling you, it, we've got to turn this thing around, or you, you guys are going to be eating at the corporations because they're the only ones that can afford to, to put up with these things. Mom and pop shops, they're going to be going out of here if we don't get a little bit more business-friendly. If the county joins in on this, it's just like a piggy pile, guys. You guys are on us. A gentleman, Dr. Rector, spoke about the downtown business association. I've been in downtown 30 years. He does not speak for me. I speak for myself. I've been a member of that association, and I found it worthless because we, they never had, did anything done. We're going to revitalize the downtown. We're going to revitalize the downtown. And city of Kerrville come along and took some of my parking. Is that revitalization, or is that taking my parking? Come on, guys. Come over, get your little certifications, come over and stand in front of my grill for an eight-hour, 10-hour, 12-hour shift and see if you want to wear a damn mask. Excuse my French and my English. I appreciate you guys hearing me out today. Judge, you talk about your power. Sometimes the best use of power is not using it.
If you've noticed, I've never used a bit of that power.
Thank you.
I, I come right back to this court.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate you hearing us out today. I appreciate you giving the public a right to say their piece. Looks like it's overwhelmingly against, from what I'm hearing. Thanks, gentlemen. Appreciate your time.
I think in case somebody, the public couldn't hear, his extra time came from somebody else that gave it to him that won't speak now.
Thank you, Ms. Al.
Sure. I think we're all recording this at the 4:00 PM.
Next, Jerry Wolf. Jerry Wolf.
Jerry Wolf.
Jerry Wolf.
I guess I'm a Jerry Wolf.
Who would be after him, John?
Linda Bullard.
Linda Bullard will be next.
How are you, sir?
Doing fine. I'm Jerry Wolf. I live at 509 North Buckwood Drive in Kerrville, and I have been a resident of Kerr County for 10 years, and I am also a senior citizen. So I'm in that special group that one is, we're all concerned about the virus. I've listened to all the people before me speaking on YouTube, so I've kind of kept up what's being said. I do not have any new statistics for you. I think they've been very well-covered in many of those things I have read myself for the last many months. And my slant or my viewpoint of all this, you think back, Kerrville was, and Kerr County and the Hill Country in general was founded on conservative principles, and that being that a person looked after themselves and their family and their neighbors. And that is encompassing within that, it maybe comes down to just American common sense. And I, as a senior citizen, I, I do not have an underlying health condition, at least not one that I'm aware of. I am not taking high precautions. In fact, I very, very rarely wear a mask. I have worn a mask for probably a total of 40 minutes in the last four months. I have worn that mask when I have been around people, friends, who ask that I wear a mask because of their condition, and I respect, respect them, and I did that. And I think in this case about, from a governable viewpoint, we have to go back to this common sense. The only way to protect yourself, if you do have, you very, have great fear about your health because of this virus, you have to quarantine, quarantine yourself and wear a mask when you do go out. The business community here, as it has been statewide and nationwide, has offered means for people to shop. You can order online, you can order by the telephone, you can come pick it up at Curbside, and we deliver to you. That is the way that a person ensures their health. This might, might not getting out into public. If we go further, you go further as a political entity deciding that it is mandatory for everyone to wear a mask to go into a business is, is going to discourage business, and that is the greatest danger that we have. There are businesses here locally, statewide, again nationally, that will never recover from this, and many of them are restaurants, as we all know. So I advocate to you that you do not pass a resolution to enforce the use of, the wearing of masks in businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Judge.
Linda Bullard.
Linda Bullard?
Terry, you're next.
Who would be next?
Terry Hall, she's right here.
My name's Linda Bullard, 916 Lazy Lane. I first want to thank all the people who've come before me to speak on this vital question. I've just been so inspired. I'm in the highest COVID risk category, and I'm here to speak against a mandatory mask rule. There are two main reasons that mandatory face masks are a bad idea. The first is that they are harmful to the wearers, and the second is that they are not effective at preventing transmission of infectious respiratory disease, and in many cases can actually even increase transmission. The way that masks are harmful to the wearers is that they reduce oxygen flow, causing oxygen deprivation. They don't allow carbon dioxide to escape, causing CO2 retention, which is poisonous, and they allow bacteria to multiply in the warm, humid atmosphere of the mask, which are then breathed back into the body. A noted neurosurgeon, Dr. Russell Blaylock, concluded that by wearing the mask, the exhaled viruses will not be able to escape and will concentrate in the nasal passages, enter the olfactory nerves, and travel into the brain. The second problem is that ordinary face masks are ineffective at preventing transmission of the disease because they do not fit tightly enough, and the material from which the ordinary ones are made, whether cloth or the simple disposable ones, do not filter out sub-microscopic particles the size of coronavirus. I would urge you to watch a video for which I will give you the link of a man demonstrating the quality of air inside a face mask with an instrument which is used to measure oxygen levels in work environments for compliance with OSHA guidelines. Within a few seconds after the sensor is put inside the mask, the measuring device signals the alarm that there is not sufficient oxygen for a worker to work under OSHA air quality guidelines. In sum, in order for you to actually be protected from infection by a mask, you would asphyxiate. The minute the mask allows you to breathe, it can no longer filter out the micro particles that make you sick. The desire for widespread masking is a reflexive reaction to anxiety over the pandemic. This psychological response is not an adequate basis for an effective public health policy that will hurt rather than help the people of our county. Moisture retention, reuse of cloth masks, poor filtration, and poor air quality cause problems. So I hear my time's up. Keep it voluntary. Don't even strongly recommend wearing of masks in businesses. There's no science to back up following the example of counties in densely populated areas.
Thank you, Ms. Bullard.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Hall.
Who would be next, Ms. Hall?
Mike Dial.
My name's Terry Hall, and I live at 118 Independence. Sorry for my voice, it's the dust. All right, so you've already heard a lot about the science, but I wanted to mention one, one or two things before I go on to some other things that I think might benefit you in this decision. I'm very against foreseeing us to wear masks. The virus passes through anything that's not N95. It's too small for the regular cotton mask, and it's certainly too small for bandanas and just any old cloth mask that people are wearing around town. Also, once that cloth mask is damp from your breathing, which is generally less than five minutes, it becomes a germ magnet and actually attracts germs in the air to your mouth, your face and mouth, making you more sick or more at risk. And I have to remember, there was a gentleman, the very first guy to speak, mentioned how many times they vacillated back and forth between, wear a mask and don't wear a mask, wear a mask, don't wear a mask. Let's not forget that U.S. Surgeon General was one of them that said at the outset, do not wear a mask, they don't do anything. Healthy people should not be wearing masks. Then let's remember that Fauci himself, this is after we reopened the economy, and many states were already on phase two, on CNN says that masks are just a gesture. In essence, it's just to make people feel better about the situation. It has nothing to do with medical science. I have, eight out of my 10 kids have asthma. They should not be wearing a mask, and to be mandated to wear one is ridiculous. But I want us to go to our first principles. Individual responsibility, lower taxes and less government. That's what we're supposed to be about in this county. We're conservative values. Government mandates on private businesses that are already barely standing afloat, that have already been bludgeoned to death by government in these last four months, is not pro-free market, and it's certainly not limited government. And certainly making all these frontline workers, like these little hostesses at all these restaurants, try to become a police officer to, to police this situation is just absolutely outrageous for these young people to bear. If someone's vulnerable or uncomfortable when they're near someone that maybe is without a mask, then back away or change the situation, or if you really are in that vulnerable category, stay home, obviously. But I don't think anyone's brought up to the social impacts that are happening with these masks. I have kids that range in age from four years old all the way up to 24. So we're, we've got the whole gamut at home. But this whole notion that we look around at everybody with masks on, it makes everybody appear like we're sick, like our whole society is sick. And this hasn't just been temporary, this is going on and on and on. And the time when these young kids, especially school-age kids and little toddlers, are getting their social norms plugged in and programmed into their brains, and what are we telling them? You don't want to approach anybody. You have to be six feet apart. Anyone other than your immediate family could hurt you. They might be carrying something that could kill you. That kind of fear mongering is outrageous for these young people. It's government control and an anti-state. And if you wouldn't mind me just saying, I think we need to get back to those first principles, and this unpredictable regulatory environment is going to kill our businesses. And I just want to end by saying, let freedom ring.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Dial.
Who would be next, Mr. Bell?
Jessica Ramirez.
Hi, my name is Mike Dial, 354 Inglewood Drive, Kerrville, Texas. I would like to state that I am against this mandate for wearing masks, and I would implore this court to not make it mandatory to wear masks in businesses or even later on leading into in public in general. I believe this to be unnecessary and egregious and only falls in line with the fear mongering that we have been bombarded with by local news, mainstream media, minute by minute. You can't turn on the TV without hearing fear. Pandemic fear. I heard a story the other day on the San Antonio News. They, they had a breakaway to a nursing home, live report that 10 people inside there had fever. I mean, that was, that was the story, but that's what gets into people's minds and causes this fear. And, and that's what the mask is an example of. The virus is real, we all know that, but the pandemic is a hoax. We can't have a second wave. We've never even had a first wave, and that's across the nation. There's been other speakers who've talked about the numbers. The numbers do not add up, simply just doesn't, doesn't add up to shutting down our economy and, and forcing people to do what we had to do during lockdown, but also with, with the requirement to wear a mask. Local restaurants, businesses, and the people that work at these places can't take another blow to the livelihood, you know, that enables them to provide for their families. I too had information about Dr. Fauci and how he has wavered back and forth on having to wear a mask. I won't go into that. But the thing about, I, I noticed people that do wear masks, when I've been in restaurants in different places, they're full with them, they, they full with their mouth and nose area wore with a mask on and then sit there and take our money, hence our food, and if they didn't have a mask on. A friend of mine went to the doctor, some speakers have talked about this. The doctor put a pulse oximeter on his hand. Well, when he walked in, he had to put a mask on. The doctor said, your, your oxygen levels are really low. Took the mask off in two minutes and it was gone. Is that my time?
No. Keep going, Mike.
In the fire service, did you wear a mask or gloves one time? It's considered contaminated and biohazard, which now has to be disposed of. So everyone that's wearing masks, they're not disposed of correctly, are we going to create a biohazard problem within our country? Do people really understand that wearing a germ-infested face diaper all day, every day for weeks and months does to your health and O2 saturation? That's the truth. Like the lady said before me, people wear the mask over and over, you're just contaminating yourself. And the craziest thing I've ever seen is people on a beautiful day, driving in their car by themselves, wearing a mask. This is because of fear. I've seen people on the River Trail on a beautiful sunny day, by themselves, walking down that trail or riding a bike, wearing a mask. This is crazy. So I'll end with this, and this came out on lawyer.com over the weekend. Four justices on the Texas Supreme Court just fired a shot across the goal of government officials continuing draconian COVID-19 restrictions in Texas, and a concurring opinion justices Blaylock, Guzman, Boyd, and Devine reminded everyone that the Constitution is not suspended when the government declares a state of disaster. I think it's y'all's responsibility to protect my rights, liberty, and freedoms. It's not your responsibility to protect my health. I can do that by myself. If somebody is sick, has a problem, I implore them to wear the mask if it makes them feel better or if it keeps them healthy, but don't force us to do it when we're healthy and we don't need to do it because it strikes fear in our population. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Who would be next, Mr. Murray?
Sandra Garcia.
Mr. Murray?
He's an NFL player.
Oh, I've represented him here. Good guy.
Yeah, good, really good.
That's Sandra Garcia. Sandra Garcia will be next.
Hi, thank y'all so much for doing this court and having it open to the public to come speak. My name is Jessica Ramirez. I live on the outskirts of Kerr County, and I am against the mandate of businesses where having to regulate this for customers. I know a lot of people have said that, there's been many studies that show that masks actually hinder your health, and I'm going just to reiterate a few things on that because it is so vital that we know this as a community and we spread the word about it because our health is everything and our government- and our government should not be the one to have our health go down in the toilet. So virus expert Judy McCovitz of the Pandemic fame has been very outspoken about the dangers of face masks, according to weblyf.com. And in her recent social media posts, she has written, "Do you know how unhealthy it is to keep inhaling your own carbon dioxide and restricting proper oxygen flow? The body requires ample amounts of oxygen for optimal health in your immune system. Proper oxygenation of your cells and blood is essential for the body to function as it needs to, in order to fight off illnesses. Masks will hamper your oxygen intake and therefore your immune health." And unfortunately, no one is telling the elderly community that with lung disease such as COPD, emphysema or pulmonary fibrosis of these dangers when wearing facial masks of any kind, which can cause severe worsening lung function. As I'm sure a lot of us already know, the elderly community already has multiple issues with lungs, and wearing face masks is only going to hinder them. As well as people with chronic illnesses, six out of 10 people in the U.S. have a chronic disease and four out of 10 people have two or more chronic illnesses, and wearing face masks is not going to help them. The virus can get through the face masks, especially the cloth face masks. I am not a health expert, but I have spent my life, as short as it may have been so far, I have spent my life researching so much about health and wellness and what we can do to protect ourselves and our immune system. And doing the face masks as mandatory will only hinder businesses and hinder our health, and that is unacceptable for our government to be able to do that to us as a community and as a nation. And it's completely unacceptable, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sandra Garcia, and then Anka.
I gave a.
Okay.
Last one, key.
Hi, I'm Sandra Garcia, 934 Pecan Street. I don't have any more information other than what others have said, but I do want my voice to be heard and to be known. Seventy-two cases out of 72,600 citizens, based on our census. So again, one thousandth of a percentage are infected. It should be our freedom to decide what's best for us. I decide to homeschool my kids. I don't believe in public education, although I am a certified public school educator, as well as a former principal of 15 years. So I have that choice as an American citizen, as I do whether or not to wear a mask. I also do not want you overstepping your authority as our leaders. You're our leaders, but you need to listen to us as well. I'm very disappointed, this is not on you, but our mayor writes, "I'm calling on businesses to require masks for their employees and that they encourage customers to use masks. If you enter a business and the employees are not using masks, then take your business somewhere else. This is not the kind of leader we want for our city, and I ask you not to be that kind of a leader for our county. Thank you."
Thank you. Grayson McMurray.
Grayson McMurray. I think they went upstairs to see if that one was up there.
Okay. Mario Garcia.
Mario Garcia. Guess they're still coming down.
Phone calls, it looks like.
We got some on the phone.
Any other live people here?
Must be upstairs.
How about in person?
We don't want the dead ones speaking.
They could not find Jason McMurray. Mario Garcia is on his way down.
Okay. And then these are phone calls. Garcia's coming. Oh, yeah. You have anybody live in there?
These are all finished.
Okay. These are all finished too.
I can't put out my mirror.
Those are your.
It could be two.
Good to see you, Mario. How you doing?
Great, Judge. Thank you. Appreciate it, Commissioners. Be short. Oh, Mario Garcia, 934 Pecan Street. Everybody said everything. I'm against it. Things which you should know, and I think we need to be very careful with what we're going with this, so I just wanted to let you know I'm against it. Everybody's already spoken. I guess, Richter said, you know, the idea he wears a mask because he's trying to protect everybody else. We're all selfish by nature. You've got to take a look at that. We really are. Initially, we're selfish, but then we kind of come together and we help each other. I think that's kind of a mindset, to me, is very big. So when you start bending that right there, he's basically telling me that because I'm not wearing a mask, I'm not concerned about him, or I'm not concerned about everybody else that are citizens in our community. And that's not true. And he's bending that in a sense, and I don't like that, because he's saying, he's basically saying that about me, and I think I disagree with that. So I'm against it. Thank you.
And thank you for your brevity.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other live people that want to address the court on mandatory mask? We've got five phone calls here. And I'm terrible at this, yeah. I just think, let you do it.
Your phone died, that's why. It had no battery left.
He had no battery.
What's the name of the first one?
It's going to be Fred Henneke.
Fred Henneke? He's no stranger to this court.
We're getting a voice now, so let's try another one.
Lisa Shook.
I haven't, I should have.
Lisa Shook.
Hi, Ms. Shook. Hi, this is Judge with Kerr County. I'm going to put Jones with the phone through the cord, okay? Can you hear us, ma'am?
Yes, I can.
Okay, Ms. Shook.
Hello?
Yes, this is Judge Kelly. You may proceed.
Yes, I definitely think that the county should mandate businesses to require face masks of employees and customers. Protecting others isn't too much to ask, and as good citizens, it's really our obligation to make sacrifices for the good of Kerrville. And I totally believe, with what Speaker Bonin said, it's time to employ personal responsibility, a key tenet of ensuring liberty and freedom. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shook. Thank you for your brevity.
Thank you.
Okay. I can't reach that gentleman. Turn it off.
Right. And she's calling one on her phone, I believe, right now. We'll just keep rotating phones.
Okay.
There's no other live persons.
Can you hear us?
Yes, ma'am, I can.
This is Conrad Work.
Conrad Work.
Yes, sir.
You may proceed.
Yes, sir. This is Conrad Work from 814 Lee Street here in Kerrville Precinct 1. Harley, good morning. Hope you're doing well. Commissioners, good morning, and Judge Kelly, good morning.
Good morning.
Yes, to be cutting to the chase, I think it's in our best interest to look at the data, look at states such as Rhode Island and Connecticut, look at countries such as Germany and Spain and France, where we're seeing proactive actions taking place to deter COVID. Those were mandates in both Rhode Island and Connecticut to wear masks. Since then, we've seen cases decrease. On a personal matter, sadly, we lost our father in April to COVID-related respiratory failure. And Harley, if you recall, when we gathered to talk about some of the comments that were made previously unrelated to this discussion, I was not wearing a mask when I met with Harley. But as we see the data increase and the concerns coming from Vice President Pence and Governor Abbott, it's clear that once again, cases are skyrocketing. I'm very much for mandate of wearing masks. I think our liberties, of course, should be protected, but I do live by that golden rule, as does Commissioner Harley, that we should treat others as we would want to be treated. So therefore, I think it is our responsibility to look out for one another, both socially and emotionally and physically. And one last note, and I'll let you all go. Commissioner Pence, I did see on the video that you were keeping a tally of those that were for and against. I think it should be noted that many of us that do support wearing masks do not feel comfortable to come into the Commissioner's courthouse at this time due to the COVID. So I would encourage the Commissioner's Court to look at those numbers to say this might be somewhat unbalanced, as many of us do not feel comfortable to speak publicly. But thank you for your time, and I do encourage you to look out to the well-being of your constituents here in Kerrville. Thanks so much.
Thank you. The next one?
Are you there, Ms. Stone?
Yes, I am.
Hold on just a moment.
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Linda Stone?
Yes.
You may proceed.
Yes, hello. My name is Linda Stone, 903 Tanglewood Lane. The national shutdown was originally based on the numbers that are now proven to be wrong, but even with that, it was not intended to stop the virus. It was for our medical community to prepare for the virus, and hopefully, we have no one in the hospital at this time. The medical community now has a better understanding of how to help, and they are ready. Eighty-four cases in Kerr County is very bad news, but the good news is that most people are recovering at home. I consider myself a good citizen, but in my opinion, is that masks should remain recommended, not mandated, and that Texas should remain open for all businesses and people should use their common sense to take care of themselves as they see fit. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and take that one. That's okay. We've got another one. All good.
Okay, Ms. Walling, are you there?
Yes.
Okay, this is Sharon Walling. You may proceed.
Yes, I'm Sharon Walling, and I am a senior, and I would really appreciate it if people would wear masks. I think it's good for the economy. And, you know, we require people to wear safety belts and not to drive drunk and kill other people. So I do feel like I can't go anywhere. I've been locked up for three months, and the seniors and the tourists do support this town. So I think if you care about the economy or if you care about other people, it would be really considerate to show that Kerrville is a caring town, that we are just above the average, that we know that from seven months of results, that not wearing a mask is not working. Other states and other countries are doing much better than we are. If we want to turn this thing around and be confident that Kerrville can survive, we really need to wear a mask. I have called museums, I've called other places. I can't go anywhere because people do not wear masks. And if they breathe on me, they're going to kill me. You know, and if we don't know with everybody's immune system who's subject to this or not, the immune system is a very tricky thing. Even the young people don't know if they get the wrong strain of the virus or if they get too much of the virus, what's going to happen to them. So I would appreciate if they would respect my constitutional, you know, right to be able to go out and spend money. I would like to go spend money. I would like to support the economy. And that's who supports this economy here is the seniors. We are a retirement community, in case the young people have forgotten that. So I appreciate that this is frustrating, that it may go on for a while, but they've got to do the intelligent, common sense thing and wear a mask when out in public. And do I have more time?
No.
One minute?
She didn't give her address, I don't think, did she?
What?
What's your address, ma'am?
2062 Summit Crest.
Yes, that's correct. And we up here would really appreciate that.
Thanks, Sharon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for having this meeting. Bye-bye.
Are you there, Fred?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay. Fred. Mrs. Fred Henneke?
Sir.
You may.
Fred Henneke, 2595 Bandera Highway.
Okay. Proceed.
I've been listening to the debate this morning. It's very interesting. I want to make about three points. One is numbers. First two and a half months of this pandemic, we had 21 cases. In the month of June alone, now we've had 63. There is no sign that this stuff is diminishing in our area. Second point I would make is that this order, potential order mandating businesses to require witnesses for their wet masks, their employees and their patrons, is the only tool at this time given to local government in an effort to flatten the curve or keep people safe, however you want to put it, outside of having to approve gatherings of more than 100, which I don't think is going to be a big.
I'm not doing that.
Help to you guys.
Don't worry about that, Fred. I'm not doing that.
What's that?
I'm not approving groups of more than 100 right now.
I'm sure you're not. The third one, the third point I would make is anecdotal. I went to lunch at a local, I went to breakfast at a local restaurant to meet one of the few clients I still have this past week, and none of the waitstaff, none of the employees that were out in the restaurant were wearing masks. And the server was doing their usual job of, do you need more tea? Would you like more coffee? But it's very uncomfortable having that person that close without a mask. I went to another restaurant in town locally in the last couple, three weeks, and all the servers there in town had masks on. I will not go back to that restaurant where there were no servers. I think it's irresponsible when you are a public accommodation, opt to take the measures that you can in order to keep the public that you serve safe. In light of all the discussion and all the rights and all this, I think that it's incumbent upon local officials who have the authority to take this step, which will undoubtedly keep a large percentage of the constituents you serve safe. And I urge you to mandate that businesses require masks of those people who serve the public, certainly not somebody in the back of the room who's eight hours back there doing what they're doing and not out with the public, should not be mandated. And I think it's incumbent upon local officials to mandate that businesses require masks for their employees who are serving the public and for the patrons who honor the restaurant. Not shut down a business. You can still take in, you can still have takeout, you can still have the sidewalk, but in the business service needs to be designated a safer place for all of us. And I thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Fred.
Thanks, Fred. Thank you, Fred. Do we have anyone else wishing to address the court with regard to the consideration of whether masks should be mandated for businesses?
Can I have a final other hour?
Can I just have, I have a question. If it is mandated, how do we, as businesses, make it happen? If people come in there and they have, they're sick and they can't wear a mask, how do we support them? You can't come in because you're sick?
There's ADA laws. We can't force somebody with ADA. We can't even ask them what their condition is, sir.
That's it.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I think we've been very patient in trying to listen to everyone's concerns. I would like for there to be some discussion by the court. I think it's important that we give some feedback to the public as to where we're going with this. As I've told you, I'm not prepared to issue an order and exercise any power that I have if it is not the wishes of this court and your representative constituencies.
Well, I'll lead off, I guess. As all of us have heard from a lot of people out in the public, and I've heard from people that normally agree on 95% of things and they're 180 degrees apart on this issue. But either side, whichever side of the fence you're on, you can be accommodated. These businesses were shut down for a while, and they got very creative how to keep their head above water. If, let's say, HEB mandates on their own, or we mandate, that customers have masks. If I didn't want to wear a mask, I can, they got curbside or home delivery. If these restaurant people, if they do not mandate masks, just like Fred said, he's got his choice, he can go someplace else. You know, that's the capitalist way of doing things. If you don't like it, go down the road. So if you don't want to wear a mask and a business requires it because of the safety, they feel it's the safety of their employees, then order curbside or delivery or go to another store. They may lose some customers because of They may lose some customers because of their stance, but they may gain some from another business down the road. And, you know, I'm against mandating. We can urge people, the business, do, do that if they want, but I am not for mandating.
Okay.
I'll go ahead, and I'll be pretty quick. To me, there's a number of several issues as to why not to do this. One, personal responsibility. I think this is something that we, our whole country is really bound by and bound upon. Second is enforcement. I don't know how you enforce this. I don't think it's fair to require businesses to get into an enforcement position. They have the ability to require it if they choose, but it's up to the businesses to do it. And really, I think probably the biggest thing is that masks don't stop transmission. I mean, the best case, they lessen it; worst case, they make it worse. So, with other health issues. So there's nothing that, there's no reason to mandate something that doesn't work and may even be detrimental. So I'm against it.
Okay. Anybody else?
We've heard from the diplomat and the pragmatist. So you can decide which category. I fall into a different category. Mask advocates want to come and go as they please, and so based on that, I'm supposed to wear a mask for them. They say, they turn it around and say that I'm the bad guy because I won't do that. But we have, I'll have you think for just a moment about the historic times in Kerr County when we had tuberculosis and people came here to be free from it. There were people that were self-quarantined. There were people that were well aware of who was sick and who wasn't, and we lived through that. We're still here. Here we are. And we didn't close everything down, and we didn't have government mandates about it. People use common sense with these two gentlemen, just suggested personal responsibility, common sense. Well, people should not wear a mask. The CDC has gone back and forth with whether you should wear a mask or whether you shouldn't. Now they've changed what they say of the centers. What will change tomorrow, and how much good is it going to do? I've talked to physi-, you want real protection? I've talked to physician after physician that tells me that the hydroxychloroquine in combination with zinc will protect you better than any mask. Now, this has come, in fact, one of them that told me this is the head of, let me see, I've got it here. He's the, oh, I don't have his credentials here. I have it somewhere, maybe. Anyway, I can tell you his name. His name is Dr. Lonnie Schrittlich, and he is actually the head of the Texas Association of Emergency Centers. And he takes it. He doesn't wear the mask, he doesn't wear anybody. He takes hydroxychloroquine, and he said the key is that you take it with zinc. So for those people that are worried and concerned about your protection, that mask is not going to do you near as much good as taking those drugs that are readily available and they're generic and they don't cost hardly anything. An old friend of mine, Dr. Steve Hodsey in Houston, has said that the mask cuts off your oxygen and is actually detrimental to you. You don't have the same blood oxygen levels, and you end up having a decreased immune system because of that. So those two things are the scientific part of it. The other part is that we've turned everything on its head. Instead of sick people being quarantined, you want healthy people, everybody, everybody, the generation that everybody got a trophy, now everybody gets a mask. Well, I'm not for that. I don't think that people that are healthy should be wearing a mask. So that's pretty much it. Here's, here's what we have right now, and it's been touched on several times. Number one, if you go to your doctor's office, they're likely to have you wear a mask. It'd be mandatory. That's step one. Employers, as we stand right now, allow you to wear a mask. Some, some of the big chains force you to wear a mask, but locally, local businesses, they allow it. Third, there is home delivery for everything from a tuba to a pizza and everything in between. You can get it on Amazon, you can get it shipped to your house, you can get a local grub hub to bring it. And third is that you have curbside delivery. So the thing about our economy, that's, I don't buy that. There's not a reason in the world for anybody to be afraid or for you to mandate that everybody wear a mask because you want to come and go as you please. I have family members that are immune compromised. They respect other people's rights, and I think everybody in this county should respect each other's rights and each other's common sense, and that's all I have to say.
How do you read those notes, Mr.?
Yeah.
I'm the only one that can read those.
I firmly believe in never make a decision until you have to. And I came into this Commissioner's Court today listening to a lot of constituents, and as I said earlier, probably 95% of them said mandate wearing masks. I listened, but after listening today, I thought, which was very, very informative, okay? I think that there is, there is the use of masks present false security, listening to scientific data people presented. I think there are ways for people to, elderly people, to protect themselves in speaking as an 80-year-old-plus person. I'm careful about what I do, okay? So therefore, I've changed my position after listening, okay? I was going to come in here recommending that make a motion that the judge is his position, you know, in the county and the leader in the county during this emergency, mandate. I'm not for that now, okay?
Don't let the judge cut you off.
Right. No, because, because I didn't make, you know, what I was doing. But I truly believe in, don't make a decision until you have to because you're going to get more information, okay? So now it's time to make a decision, so I've made my decision. I'm not going to support a mandate by the, by the judge.
I will, one other thing I'd like to add, this isn't a flippant decision on my part. I live with somebody that says high risk is anybody in this county. She wore a mask on, she was off work on Friday, she wore a mask out of the yard because of the dust. Her problems were respiratory to begin with, and so, you know, this is something that's not just going with the flow. This is something we've discussed many times, and she feels the same way as most of y'all do, that worth their opinions today. She said, "I can't hide underneath the couch." I've seen her with the seasonal flu, and it's, it's ugly. It's ugly. So, yeah, there's lots of thought that goes in this on my part, I promise you.
Good, one, just a quick comment. Since someone referenced that I was keeping a tally, the tally that I came up with with today was 15 were not in favor of a mask and 7 were in favor of it, of those communicated. It's probably closer to 50/50 what I received outside this meeting.
Well, and for what it's worth, the chatter that I got over the weekend on my phone that I talked about at the beginning of the meeting was probably at least that lopsided or more the other way. But I deliberately put this on the agenda, and you can see we spent a lot of time doing this today. We still have a lot of county business to do after this, but I thought it was important for the community, for the public, to hear this debate and to understand that what's important here is that this community quit fighting over the small stuff and start uniting on the big stuff. And this whole fight over masks and who has the right to wear a mask, who has the right not to wear a mask, needs to come to a conclusion. Now, most of you out there in the public that know me or have heard about me know that I had a pretty good idea of how this vote was going to go, and that's why in talking with the mayor, I did not want him to charge out and do something that was going to put me in a position that I would have to oppose his declaration, his proclamation, his order. And so, in the spirit of still working together with the city, and I know, I understand people have different opinions about the county and the city, but we still work, we live in the same community, and we're all here together, and I want to overcome this. And so I said that at the beginning of this, that I was going to make a motion, and I'm going to make the same motion that I've been telling the mayor every time we talk about it. I recommend those people that are concerned about masks, if you feel like you need to wear them, you have the right to wear them. If you don't want to wear the mask, I think you have the right not to wear the mask. I do think that as we do this, we need to quit sniping at one another and start, and realize that this is something that it's a best practices policy. Everybody needs to do what you believe is the best practices within the guidelines that we've been given. And so I think that we need to be patient with one another and try to understand where other people are coming from. We, we need to be patient, understanding, respectful, and considerate of one another. And if both sides of this issue will do that, we'll get along a lot better and we'll unite as a community. And that's been the real purpose of this exercise. It's been a long process. We tried to listen to everybody. I think somebody sent me an email that they got hung up on. I apologized to whoever that was. We were trying to talk to everybody. I think if you watch this, you're going to see.
That was the first one, and we called it back on my cell phone.
Okay, good, good. So we've given everybody the opportunity. The motion that I'm going to make is to follow the mandate of this court, and that is that we, I make a motion that we encourage everyone, businesses and individuals, to wear masks in public for themselves and for others if they believe that. And if they don't believe that, they don't, then, you know, do what you believe. Everybody exercises their own rights. And so what I'm trying to do is to be able to send a message to the public. My motion is, let's say that that is the best practice and a recommendation of this court if that's what you believe.
So what's the motion specific?
For this court to make recommendations to the public to wear masks if you believe that is in your best interest.
I'll second that.
Is there any other discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. We worked through an issue that were, there are very sharp disagreements, and we came out with a unanimous solution.
From all different points of view.
From all points of view. From all points of view. Let's take a five-minute break, and then we're going to do Kenny Business.
Thank you very much.
Court, we'll come back to session. Next item on the agenda is 1.4, Discussion Regarding the Election Option for Alcoholic Beverage Sales in Precinct 2. Sorry, questioner. We've got, is anyone here to speak on the alcohol sales in Precinct 2?
Me.
Okay, good.
Claudia cannot be here. She's gathering petition signatures at the early voting, but as of this morning, we had about 1,200 signatures out of a little over
Are we off down there?
No, we, the stream's coming in with Shut it off. Okay. So we've got about 1,200 signatures, need 2020, 2016, actually. So that says about 50 a day between now and July 17th. Chance of getting that is pretty low, but the people are trying as hard as they can. So people are out at, out at the early voting, and they will be there every single day, and they'll be there during the voting. So anybody that hadn't signed that cares to, please, please, please sign. We'll have some
Tony, have they tried set up like outside of Minimark or anything like that?
We've done every, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Lots of, lots of things like that. Lots, lots of activities. So, okay, but that's, that's all there is on that.
Great, good news. 1.5, Consider Discuss to Take Appropriate Action on the Request to Ban Fishing in the Dog Park Section of Flat Rock Park. Is it Afrofini?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now I've got your request to approach, to address the court. You may proceed.
Good morning, Honored Commissioners. My name is Afrofini. My address is Kerrville, Texas. We're holding my actual address for safety concerns. I've provided you each with the petition that I'm just going to go ahead and read so that the rest of the public knows. This is the simple version of the six-page letter that I sent you guys. I don't know if you got to it over the weekend. But also in note, what you have on your paper at the end of the petition there is signatures of 90 people that have signed in support of it. Right now, the number is actually at 125 in county, and these are people that are in support of ban fishing at Flat Rock Park. And then this is what the petition says. Flat Rock Park is a very popular dog park in Kerrville, Texas, and a no-tourist attraction for canine lovers. It is adjacent to Flat Rock Park running along the Guadalupe River. The area set aside for dogs is a very large and wonderful place to let dogs run and swim. It is well marked at the beginning of the entrance to Flat Rock Park where it is the designated off-leash dog park area begins. However, over the years as well as recently, it seems there has been an issue with people fishing within the space while dogs are running free. A situation could arise in which the county or Parks Department could face a lawsuit for endangerment of animals or negligence to enforce and change the, and I put unposted rules, to keep our dogs safe. The area beyond the bridge is already designated a dog park area for unleashed dogs. This park serves as the only source of run-play and river time for many dogs and owners who likely obey the other areas of the park and river trails where posted rules of dogs not allowed to be off-leash. It is noted that fishing is not posted as okay or not okay within any areas or signage stating rules of Flat Rock Dark Park. This needs urgent attention. There are several signs that say off-leash dog park area. There's a fence along the roadside and a beautiful kept field and even doggy waste disposal stations. The area along the river is full of weeds, floating sticks, underwater driftwood, and roots. This makes it perfect for dogs and swimming and playing there. People fishing have both, people fishing have, place both parties at potential risk. Another concern being hooks and lures that inevitably get left behind, as well as bait that is tossed aside, as bait is a natural attractant to dogs of all ages. All it takes is one dog playing, fetch, or just jumping in the water where previously left behind hook or tangled line is to become injured. You know as well as I do that no fisherman will go after his own tangled lure, no matter how far, how much it was paid for or how shiny it is. Any dog, and every dog, however, has a natural instinct and attraction toward shiny objects in the water, not to mention a stick being thrown or to those fishing what would be a fishing pole. Fishing debris will also wash towards the shoreline posing yet another risk for injury. Every person allowed to continue to fish in this area increases the chances of a dog getting injured there. By mandating and enforcing a no-fishing policy within the designated dog park, you will be helping to advocate the safety of dogs at the dog park by rules that are, are expected to be a part of a dog park area as seen by dog enthusiasts, trainers, and veterinarians. You will also be helping ensure tourists enjoy Kerr County dog parks.
Thank you.
Can I add to that, or is that mine?
That was your timer.
Okay. Thank you.
If I may, Judge, thank you for this. That's a lot of people to sign a petition. We've had a lot of discussion this morning about personal liberties and freedom and things like that. As an individual, I'm down at the dog park often, maybe a couple of times a week, and after eight years of being on the court, I've never heard of an issue between people with dogs running in the park and people fishing. Commissioner Letts has been here 20 years, and I don't know if he's heard anything like that. We've had questions and concerns about compatibility of the use of the dogly off-leash area in the dog park. We've had people come in, want to play soccer. We allow them to play soccer. There was compatibility, there was not a compatibility issue between playing soccer in the dog park and the dogs running. I thought there would be, but there was not. People picnic in that area, okay, in addition to dogs running. People picnicking there know that their food may be consumed by dogs running around, but that's the choice that they take. So it's, to me, to me, it's, it's people's choice. They know that the dogs are there, they can run around if they want to fish. The dogs may disturb them, so, you know, but I appreciate you doing that, but I personally don't see it being more restrictive.
Well, I can say, even if you did, people still fish from boats along the ocean, they're going to lose lures and stuff in the water from fishing from the boats and what have you. And I think people know that dogs might interfere, and people should know that fishermen might interfere, I mean, with their dogs.
I think the sheriff pointed out also earlier that you can't keep people from fishing along the bank, period. So if they wanted to, we couldn't even stop them. Is that correct?
That's the question I have, is the legality, because that is the Guadalupe River. It's been dammed up, and we call it Flat Rock Lake, but it is the Guadalupe River, and that is a navigable stream, and the public is entitled to use of that stream, period.
Not from a bank necessarily.
No, I, I understand. And it's just like any landowner And it's just like any landowner that has riverfrontage.
Right. No, no, no. If we own the property that is the bank, that's...
We can regulate the bank.
That's right.
But we can't regulate the lake.
No, you, the public owns what is called a gradient bank.
That's it.
The original bank, which is normally along the edge, the public has a right to have access.
Even if it's private law.
When I say "we," I mean the taxpayer.
The taxpayer, yeah, the public. And you cannot, and they have a right to, to access the river through that and to use the river for fishing or other sporting events through that gradient bank. You can't, by law, there's too many lawsuits, and I think the county attorney can attest to that. There were lawsuits in this county that went all the way up to the state Supreme Court where Sheldon Ranches tried to fence all the parks. That didn't work, where there was a lot of ones-up stream that we dealt with for the last 40 years that I've been here. And I filed about 406, said you can't regulate.
Turn right.
So what about just providing signage and letting people know?
If you've got to speak, please come to podium.
Sorry. Another issue is just not knowing, you know. So what about just providing signage along the river that states, you know, that this area is, is going to be open to fishing or not open to fishing? Or having a portion of it set aside just for the dogs and, you know, dog people to be safe and fishermen to be safe? Because no fisherman wants to have a dog come up and grab his fishing pole out of him, you know? And that's a dog instinct. You've already regulated that area as a dog park, so why not allow it to be just for the dogs?
We've designated, not regulated.
Designated.
What I'm hearing from the sheriff and from the county attorney is that legally, we can't do what you're asking us to do.
You can't put signs up to say, "This is a designated dog park. Please fish on the other side of the park."
There's a sign up that says "Dog Park" when you walk, when you go in, isn't it?
Right.
So you know it's a dog park when you pull in.
Exactly. That's exactly what I thought. And that's why I got in an argument with the lady at the park, because I know it's a dog park. So why am I going to be, you know, needing to yell at my dog for going after what my dog was thinking as a stick that somebody's throwing?
But that works both ways.
Chasing me out of the park because...
It's kind of like what we were talking about earlier. If you drive in there and you see that it's a dog park, but you decide to fish there, you know what you're in for. So it's pretty simple. It's just common sense.
But the only signs that are up currently just say that, you know, that, say about the state, you know, say the state law says, you know, it says fishing is applicable by state law.
The other part of it is, dogs are free to roam, but they still have to be under your control.
Unless they're aggressive.
Excuse me, excuse me, we need to maintain order here.
Under control, unless it's the law.
Yeah, no, the dog is under control.
So if the dog is, is under your control, it shouldn't be going running up and grabbing a lure.
No, it wasn't. But my dog is well-trained.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Burton, would you like to address the court?
Yeah, Sean Mirkens, 15 Robertson Road. How are you all today?
We're getting tired, but we're doing good.
I'm hearing into voice, my opinion, I was here about a year ago with Karen and so forth, about the issues at Flat Rock. I think all of you know, especially Tom, that I'm adamantly against fishing and picnicking at the dog park. If we had to put banning food on another agenda, we could, but fishing bait, I believe, is considered food, so I think we can kind of combine it. I was raised in Hunt on the river. I fished, I loved to fish. I'm not against fishing. I was fishing since I was eight years old. It was a wonderful place to live. I mean, we had five acres, a river right behind us, and I would catch them, scale them, clean them, gut them, and give them to my mother to cook. Now, I'm a catch-and-release. I've gotten even more compassion for animals. Can't, can't kill them. Okay, but we started, we moved back here, it took me 40 years, and 2013, and pretty much immediately started going at the park. I've had several incidences in the seven years with picnickers and fishing. My dogs, I feed the minimum, I wish, so they do not get obese like their mother. And they're hungry all the time. So they smell, if someone's on, you know, has a blanket on the ground with food spread out for picnic, they're going straight over there. Some people have a grill. They've taken hot chicken off someone's grill before. And then we get yelled at and screamed at. They get up, they try to kick my dogs. Luckily, they missed them because one's almost 15. And I say, it's not rocket science to bring food on the ground, especially in an off-leash dog park. Get your dog under control. I don't believe that the reason it's off-leash is so they can chase squirrels. They can splash. My one dog loves to leap into the water and swim halfway across the river. I have a 30-foot leash. I do keep him leashed at that park. I normally got a river trail, because he's half a high prey driver. I don't want him to get a hold of a squirrel or anything. But anyway, so unless they are aggressive, which they shouldn't be there anyway, or unless they're jumpers and jumping and knocking down elderly people, adults or kids, they don't need to be under your control. They just need to be, you know, watched by you. And they shouldn't be there if they're like that. But that off-leash, in that whole phrase, off-leash dog park, is there for a reason, so they can run around. My dog's very, he has to be exercised every day. It's an 80-pound lean, mean-killing machine.
Ms. Burton, I don't mean to interrupt, but, but I am. Because the topic here is no fishing and not the rest of this.
Yeah, well, the bait, I know, but the bait is food. So I'm bringing in the picnicking also, which, we have to put that in another...
It's another agenda.
Okay, that's what I said before. Okay, we will. Okay, so I, quickly, I can tell you more incidences that happened, but I had to shorten it, obviously, because of the three minutes. One man was just arriving. He put a loaf of bread on a bench. He was throwing some kind of little trap and trying to get it in the water. And my four-year-old dog was trying to play with the trap. My 15-year-old dog was starting to eat the loaf of bread, and I kept telling him, "Sir, my dog's eating your bread, sir." And he was too busy getting the trap and embating four of his poles. And when he finally listened to me and looked, half of the bread was gone. And he looked at me like I should run up to Stripes and go buy him another loaf of bread. He didn't say anything. So that wasn't really bad. I've had people fishing that the dog, they leave their bait exposed, and my dogs run over and start eating it. And they, I just get screamed and yelled at, and I say, "Don't expose your bait." And then one other thing, and then I'll wrap it up. There was a young boy, 14-year-old, maybe, boy, and I saw him as I was getting closer. We walk along the bank. He had one pole in the water, and I saw one on the ground. So I yelled to him, I said, "My dogs are coming. Please get your one on the ground, get the hook up, because if you have bait on." So they got there before I did, and he got it out. And I got up to him, and I said, "Thank you." I said, "It's really not a good idea to be fishing or, you know, here with the dogs and leaving your baited hook on the ground." And he agreed. He was very polite. I amend his parents, because he was a polite child, and he agreed, and he apologized. So that was not a really bad experience. But there's another issue. I walked by, and they're starting to, you know, throw their pole out. You walk by, and it's almost hooked me in the eye or hooked my dog on the head, you know, the hook before they, you know, cast out. I, I almost got blinded by a person when I lived in Hunt. A friend of mine came to fish, and I was baiting my hook, and she was behind her, and she was getting ready to cast it, and all of a sudden it got me in the eye. So that's another thing that can happen, too.
Ms. Burton, it's noon, and we've got a lot of county business to do. We have another budget workshop at 2:00, and I have a juvenile hearing at 1:30, so...
And we have been waiting here for two and a half hours, and we're hungry, too. So thank you.
Thank you.
Can we put picnicking on the agenda now?
You can, but...
But you're done.
You want to be...
You're done. And I'm not a paranoid schizophrenic either, okay?
I'll say one thing. It says, sign says off-leash dog park. That means warning if you're going to picnic, warning if you're going to fish, the dogs are running around.
People don't, it needs to say that, because they don't get it.
Well, it's been heard.
We get fish down.
We have people that are intentionally going down there to fish. That's the main problem, is you have people that are intentionally saying, "I can fish down there while your dogs are running free."
Yes, ma'am, they can. That's what we're telling you. Legally, they can.
But all the dog parks I've been to, I have, it says no food permitted, and that's bait, too, in the font, on the dog roll board. It's just a no-brainer.
Means county negligence.
Okay, thank you.
That's how I look at it.
Okay. You're done.
Okay. Is Jason outside there? Item 1.6, Consider Discuss to Take Appropriate Action on Relocation of the Kerr County Juvenile Probation Department from 3499 Legion Drive to 3501 Legion Drive. This includes, but not limited to, allowing Kerr County Juvenile Board to make improvements and modifications to the facility, authorizing transfer of items for Kerr County to the Kerr County Juvenile Board, and setting a timeline for relocation. Jason Davis.
Morning. How are you all, Judge Commissioners? I'll get to the...
It's not morning anymore.
Give me a yes, and we can get a lunch. So...
I make a motion that we approve the move of Juvenile Probation Department into the new facility, like we've been talking about for the last year and a half.
Second.
Those in favor, raise your hands. Five, zero.
That's more money.
Hi, Jason.
Thank you. That was very compelling.
That was a good strategy.
And Jason, he has done an outstanding job.
Without doubt.
I'll second that, too.
1.7...
We think you've done a good job.
Thank you, appreciate it.
1.7, Consider Discuss to Take Appropriate Action to Set a Public Hearing on July 27, 2020, at 10:00 a.m. to be held in the Commissioners' Courtroom, 700 Main Street, Kerrville, Texas, for the purpose of presenting the county clerk's annual record archival plan in accordance with local government code. Ms. Dowdy.
Standard procedure. We can open up for discussion, but...
I make a motion that we set the public hearing. If that is requested.
Okay.
Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, five, zero.
Thanks, Jack.
Good work. You've got one more.
One more.
1.8, Consider Discuss and Take Appropriate Action for the County Clerk's Office Jobs Description for Chief Deputy Clerk, Administrative Deputy Clerk, and Deputy Clerk and Records Management and Archives Juvenile Clerk. Ms. Dowdy.
I provided the court with those four job descriptions. Just to make a note, though, the third one, the, the general draft of the deputy clerk is really the same as the juvenile records management clerk. The only difference is the proportion and time spent, so it's, I'm going to leave it up to, to the court to decide if you want to pass all four job descriptions or just three.
And, and is it just updating your job descriptions?
It certainly is, yes. Correct.
And is it changed anything materially?
Commissioner Letts had asked to ask that I provide a job description specifically for records management juvenile deputy clerk. So I've, I've done that, but I updated them all because they needed it. But what I found is that that position that was requested to be provided a job description actually matches the deputy clerk general job description. It's just the difference is the proportion of time spent on each task, so that's why.
Is this anything we need to run past HR, or is this just, we leave it up to the official?
I did provide it to HR.
I'm looking at the county attorney.
I did provide it to HR and, and the county auditor as well. I didn't provide it to the county attorney.
I usually tell, if there are not real questions about tasks and things, I don't usually review everybody's job descriptions for them. So if HR and auditor have, have signed off...
Yeah, well, it seems like to me she knows her job descriptions in, in her office.
If I may say, the last salary study they did back in 2000, Jonathan, if you remember, part of that study actually did the job descriptions. So they may get redone if you do that same type of study, if that's what you want to do.
But is this going to change grades and stuff?
It's not going to change, well, however, the, the job description that I was provided did have a, a grade on there that didn't match what I was, what, what is officially...
So what's the resolution to that?
To adopt the job descriptions as presented, either all three, either all four or just the three.
So what, is it, why is this really necessary, and what's it changed?
Because, well, it updates the amount of tasks that we take on. For chief and admin, at least to my knowledge, the, the number, the number on the pay grade did not match what there actually really is. And then also the issue of having a records management slash juvenile deputy clerk, did I need to provide that job description? So I did. But what I found is that that job description actually matches the general job description of the deputy clerk.
Could I come make a recommendation? Did you work this with HR and Commissioner Letts and come back next session?
I can do that, certainly.
That'll make it much faster.
I think Commissioner Letts...
Okay, can we do that?
We can't, I mean, I think...
Is it necessary?
Yeah, I think this is necessary, and there's two reasons why it's necessary. One, the, part of the, the job description includes records, then that portion of that salary can get paid out of a records archival fund, which saves the general fund money. So I'm in favor of that part of it. The other part of it, as long as it's not increasing budget on the grade, as long as we're saying the grade is staying the same...
All over.
On this versus the other, or what we had for, I can go ahead and do it.
And there's no personnel changes?
No.
So I'll make a motion to approve the job descriptions.
Three, all, all three or all four, sir?
I'm going to look at that part.
Now, is that pending some, some verbiage about the archival fund, or is that just a given? Is that part of it?
It's just a given.
Correct. Did you want the juvenile deputy clerk, records management clerk, separate from the general job description of the deputy clerk?
Let me go with Mr. Moser. We'll move to him one more time.
And, and for guidelines, Ms. Dowdy, if you could, when you come back, show us with regard, especially to the one that that has to do with records management, because we know we've got another fund that we can use to, to partially fund that position. Just give us an explanation of how you've allocated that, so that we know.
And, and I, and I have, it's just, I think we're pressed for time, and so I would, I don't mind coming back.
Well, I think you deserve our, our undivided attention next week.
Okay. I'm ready. Thank you.
Thank you. 1.9, Consider Discuss to Take Appropriate Action Regarding the Nominations for the Regional Flood Planning Group and Political Subdivision Support for the RFPG. Commissioner Moser.
Thanks, Judge. I'm going to be really quick on this. I mentioned last Commissioners' Court, what Texas Water Development Board is creating regional flood planning groups, and they're also asking for political subdivision support for flood planning groups. Be very brief, there'll be 15 regional flood planning groups which will be formed. One of them is the Guadalupe Region, okay, which goes from Kerr County all the way to the Gulf of Mexico. I presented a resolution here for everybody to look at. This has been coordinated with Commissioner Letts and Ray Buck of UGRA. The bottom line in this whole thing, of the 12 interested categories, which will have a person representing each one of these 12 categories in the Guadalupe region, okay, flood planning region. The categories are agriculture, industries, river authorities, counties, municipalities, water districts, flood districts, electric generating utilities, public water utilities, environmental interests, and small business. With that, the resolution, I'll read that, I won't read all the wherewithal, is therefore be resolved, Kerr County Commissioners' Court does hereby, on June 29, 2020, support the following individuals to be submit, for them to submit interest forms in the categories indicated. Kerr County Commissioner Tom Moser for counties, Southwest turf and irrigation owner, the garden house owner, and the Cherry Creek Ranch owner, Jonathan Letts, be under the category of small businesses. UGRA general manager, Ray Buck, under river authorities. Camp La Junta executive director and director and owner, Lake Smith, will be under public. And the city engineer, under the city of Kerrville, Kyle Burrow, under municipalities. And the city engineer, under the city of Kerrville, Kyle Burrow, under municipalities. So with that, I make a motion that we adopt the resolution.
Second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Moser, seconded by Commissioner Harris to approve the resolution with regard to the nominations to the...
Texas Water...
To the regional flood planning group political subdivision support.
Correct. And the other thing is, and authorize Kerr County to submit an interest form to serve as the political subdivision supporting the regional, Guadalupe region flood plan group. That's significant, okay? Because with that, and Commissioner Letts can elaborate on exactly what the commitments would be to do that, so...
Before we get to that, I visited with the city manager. He recommends city engineer Kyle Burrow. That's how he ended up on the list. And this is a note to Jody. I misspelled when I did this provision for municipalities. We do that. And if anyone has questions about the political subdivision, I'm excited to answer.
Is it a requirement to have somebody from the city or just us?
There's an interest group for municipalities. So they get one. And I don't know that the city's going to have time to do something like this. I told them we have no problem, I had no problem recommending Kyle Burrow for that slot.
And these people will submit things that may, none of them may get approved, okay?
Sure.
Okay? With the endorsement via the resolution, it just happens.
Right.
But the other one is the county submitting an application to be the sponsoring...
Political subdivision.
Subdivision. Political subdivision. And that's some administrative...
The political subdivision handles the contracts and if there is money, they handle the money side of it, much like the grants we did, the CWDB on the sewer project. There, you know, this is not a, the regional planning group is not a political entity or corporate entity that can sign documents, but so you have...
Is it a taxing entity?
No, no taxing. But the, so the political subdivision is an entity that can execute documents on behalf of the planning group and will receive funds and does the accounting of that that's dispersed to the consultants that will be hired.
It's the planning group.
Well, the planning group is...
These?
Yeah, these people that get appointed by the water development.
Okay.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, five, zero.
Thanks. I think she's very good on it.
Item 1.10, consider to discuss to take appropriate action to declare certain county items in the treasurer's office surplus. James Robles.
We say the easiest one for last. We have two chairs, desk chairs in the county treasurer's office. We'd like to declare a surplus that has been replaced and no longer function.
Move for approval.
Second. Okay, any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, five, zero. I saw you. I knew what you meant, Harlan. Item 1.11, consider to discuss to take appropriate action regarding an emergency solutions cares grant to provide funds for rural residents experiencing or at risk of homelessness. And this came in at the last minute and it was, we have a deadline to submit the grant application. Judge said that I want to amend the agenda, so we did, so that we can meet the deadline and see where it goes.
She made modifications.
What have we, what have we been doing with this?
On this one, it deals specifically with rural residents experiencing or at risk of homelessness. We don't have a conduit already to connect into that. It's going to be having to start a whole new program. At this point, you would probably have to go ahead and find a grant administrator in order to devise something like this.
Take no action.
Okay. Okay, so we'll take no action on that. Let's move on to the approval agenda. Don't leave. Pay the bills.
Today's invoices for Kerr County, $1,800,000, $1,8,781.98. For the airport, $9,174.97. County clerk fees, $288.28. $198 DA forfeiture, $185. And the plateau water planning is $70.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Ballou, seconded by Commissioner Letts to approve the bills as presented. Any further discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Five, zero, unanimous. Budget amendments.
Yes, we have eight today. They're kind of a variety. First one is non-departmental to information technology. This is for purchasing laptops. The second one is non-departmental contingency to professional services. Third is a line item transfer within the veteran service department. Fourth is a line item transfer within the environmental health. Number five is certifying new revenue for insurance proceeds versus failed damage to the share of vehicles. Number six is a line item transfer within the juvenile probation. Number seven is certifying new revenue for the HABA cares elections and setting up the corresponding expenditure budget. And number eight is a transfer out or from contingency to transfer out. This is going to our debt service fund. This is to make up the gap in the lack of connection fees we received in anticipated revenue to make our debt service payment.
Which fees have they ever received?
Kendall County connection fees. We anticipated receiving a little more money than we have been. We need to cover that debt service payment.
And forgive me for asking, but is there any way that's COVID-related?
I don't think so.
No. It's because we're behind schedule at the sewer project.
Okay. I was just asking.
But the laptops might be...
Yes, they are. Yes. The first budget adjustment is COVID-related.
I move for approval.
Well, let me ask one question about the alternative housing for juveniles. What exactly is that?
That is to move their offices from one building to the other.
That's all this is?
Yes.
Adult housing, we're going to send kids out of county. That does...
Need a second.
That could be...
A second.
Is that COVID-related? We're not sending, you're not sending them out because of COVID?
They have to go somewhere. They've already been...
No, no, no. Actually, what happened during this whole pandemic is we've had counties that won't take our kids. And so we can't. We've got money in alternative housing in the budget that we can't spend because we can't house the kids. And so they're unsupervised out there, running around. And some of them are doing okay and some of them are not. We're going to have a hearing at 1:30 or...
Some of them are not.
Okay, so the motion was made by Commissioner Harris and seconded by Commissioner Ballou to approve the budget amendments. Any further discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, five, zero. Late bills?
There are not any.
Auditor reports?
There are not any.
Okay, thank you. Monthly reports? Nope.